Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission Meeting of Wednesday, January 11th, 2017. I'd also like to welcome our newly appointed Commissioner, Commissioner Janoff. The meeting is now called to order even though we have a huge traffic problem tonight, which has caused some delays. If you haven't already done so, please take a moment to silence your devices. Mr. Paulson, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Chair Badami. Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Commissioner Birch?
Here.
Commissioner Janoff?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
And Chair Badami?
Here. Would everyone please stand and join Commissioner Janoff as she leads us with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as well.
The Town of Los Gatos strongly encourages your participation in the public process with verbal and written comments. To speak on any item tonight, please be sure to complete a speaker's card located within the benches and follow the instructions on the back of the card. Matters relating to agenda items will be heard during the itemized public hearing. Matters not on the agenda will be heard under verbal communications. Tonight, we have written communications, and that would be desk items for items number two and number four, and an addendum for item number three. Have the Commissioners had an opportunity to review the correspondence? Commissioner Birch?
Can I ask a question concerning the desk items? When we get to these particular items, will staff explain a little bit as to, in particular, what prompted desk item number, the desk item for item number four? Can we have a little bit more in-depth explanation behind what prompted this? We don't need to do it now, just when we get to the item. I'm a little confused.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. I'd like the Commission to take note that the Subcommittee Report category, as listed on our agenda, now includes Commission matters that used to be heard at the end of the hearing. So I will ask for Subcommittee reports first, and then ask if there are Commission matters for discussion. Do Commissioners have any Subcommittee reports to share this evening? Seeing none. Are there any Commission matters to share this evening? Commissioner Birch?
Sorry, being again. I was not at the last meeting because I had to recuse myself from that item, so I just wanted to take the opportunity, if by any chance he's watching, to express my deep appreciation for our former Commissioner Charles Erickson, who served on this Commission for an extremely long time, and his history and insight was invaluable to me when I was a new Commissioner, and his help as I understood how the town processes worked just proved to be something that, well, I just hope I can measure up to other Commissioners. So if he is watching, Charles, thank you very much, and I did eat dinner.
Touche, Commissioner Birch. Thank you for that report. We're now at verbal communications, and I do not have any speaker cards for any item other than agendized items. Would anybody like to speak to us tonight on a matter not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no one come forward? We will pass on that for now and move to our first item, number one, which is approval of the minutes for November 9th and December 14th of 2016. Is there a motion to approve? Commissioner Hanson?
I move that we approve the minutes of November 9th and December 14th.
Commissioner Birch?
I'll second that.
Discussion. I was recused from item number four of the December 14th, 2016 minutes, but view the hearing and can attest to the accuracy of the minutes. Commissioner Janoff?
I also view the, excuse me, the videos of the meetings, and can attest to their accuracy and would approve the minutes.
Thank you. So I will call the question. All in favor? Aye. Passage unanimously. Item number two is a request of continuance for 401 to 409 Alberta Way. Staff and the applicant are requesting a continuance to March 22nd, 2017, for additional preparation time and neighborhood outreach. Do I have a motion to continue? Commissioner Hanson?
I move that we continue the item to March 22nd, 2017.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Birch?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passage unanimously. Item number three. 140 South Santa Cruz Ave, the Toll House Hotel. Conditional use permit application U-16-005. Requesting approval for a modification to an existing conditional use permit to allow entertainment before 10:00 p.m. on property zoned C-2 P.D., APNs 510-45-064 and 065. Ms. Sarnowitz, I understand you'll be providing us this evening with a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The Commission will remember that in June, the Council adopted a late-night entertainment policy to allow entertainment by right prior to 10:00 p.m. And then to come into conformance with this policy, in September, this application came before you for a recommendation to Council as one of several anticipated requests for, to amend CUPs that were previously approved with entertainment restrictions. At that meeting, the Commission requested a noise assessment to address concerns of several neighbors regarding noise impacts, and particularly those related to violations by a previous owner in 2009. So in November, the applicant submitted the noise assessment, and the Commission continued the item to this evening in order to allow the applicant and neighbors to meet further. In December, the applicant met with the neighbors and has outlined the currently proposed conditions to address noise, including monitoring and speaker setup, which are pursuant to the noise assessment, as well as an additional condition prohibiting percussion instruments and live bands. And the recommended conditions of approval have been revised to reflect those conditions for the Commission's consideration. So this evening, should the Commission determine that the direction's been met, it can recommend approval to the Council. Should the Commission have further concerns, they can recommend approval with additional conditions or denial. So this concludes staff report, and we are here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sarnowitz. Any questions for staff? Seeing none. I will now open the public testimony portion of the hearing and allow the applicant and his team 10 minutes to address the Commission.
Good evening, and welcome, for you, these who are new. This is my third visit to this venue. I really have very little new to offer, other than the community outreach that we conducted and a meeting that we had with a group of neighbors on Broadway on December 14th. In that meeting, our expectation was to really try and navigate into a, is there a middle ground that we can come to with the conditional use modification? And we were told pretty much that, based upon the past history, the fear of going back to a place that really was something that they didn't want to do, we really were at an impasse. It was disappointing. One of the expectations at that meeting was that we were to bring some compromises to the table, and really, our ambition was to actually come and talk through those. As Ms. Sarnowitz mentioned, is we came back with an email to them two days later saying that we are happy to make some very clear modifications and some compromises, and the three most important of those were, was to, one, have a monitoring system that we could actually scientifically say whether we were or were not in compliance. Secondly, is based upon the location of the speakers. We believe that one of the largest problems in the past history of conflict with this was that the sound that was used off of the courtyard of the Toll House Hotel was actually directed towards Broadway Street. And we recommend that we have all of the sound actually against our sound wall facing into the hotel. We believe that that will actually direct the sound there and will not reverberate to the extent that it did in the past, and will allow us an additional level of compromise to allow sound minimization. And the third one was to say this, percussion is one of the issues that we believe creates the largest dynamic in sound that creates risk. We'll just eliminate it. We are happy to consider other options at this point, but we felt that those three options were really three that kind of put us in a position that, going back to the sound study, and for those of you that were not part of that, when we did that in October, we actually reached some decibel levels on our courtyard that were unacceptable to us. So we don't believe that we'd ever hit those levels, but they were still not discernible at the locations of the Broadway residences. So, long story short, is that we've been asked to make a number of steps and progressions as we've started this process back in June. We believe we've met them. We believe that we've actually presented some compromises, and, you know, at this point, we believe that when the town changed the policy in June, our eligibility to apply for that, per the website, we've met all those requirements. And I understand that there's neighbors, and we want to be sensitive to them, and they're here to certainly speak their side of the story. But, you know, our position is that there should be some compromise in the conditional use that allows us to somewhat enjoy the policy that exists in this town without compromising the lifestyles of our neighbors, and they believe that any compromise is going to be unacceptable. And we're coming to you and saying that this is our third swing at this. I would like to receive a recommendation of approval, but if not, I would like to also consider that we actually move forward with this onto the Town Council because, as mentioned in the letter recently, is that continuing to require our neighbors to endure these meetings and come out and do what they're doing, and I feel bad, you know. Nobody wants to impose a hindrance on anybody, but, you know, we keep coming to these meetings, and we end up with either a continuance or an argument, and I think everybody understands what the positions are of both sides. We're looking for a compromise. They would like none. It's up to you to really decide whether or not we are eligible for some level of compromise and what that might look like, and a recommendation on that. But at this point, I would really like to try and start moving forward on this.
Sir, could you state your name again for the record, so I can match you up with the speaker card?
My apologies. Jim Gurney.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you for your presentation, and I'm really happy to hear that you had a meeting with the residents. I know that was one of our big concerns from the last meeting. Are you able to, do you remember or recall, or have, how many of the residents attended? I'm sure it was hard to get everyone in one place, and I don't expect, I don't have any expectations. I just wanted to know about how many residents came in. I had a follow-up question.
Certainly. Commissioner, we actually sent a note via the emails that we had at the meeting that was coordinated by Mr. Lenhart's house. We ended up having, I think it was five of the residents, and from five different locations. And he actually, rather than asking us to do, we wanted to have individual meetings, just so we could talk to everybody, and Mr. Lenhart said, why don't we do everybody at our house? We'll host the meeting on December 14th, and I will get as many of the residents as possible.
Okay. Well, and that's probably a pretty good turnout, given that it was, you know, you tried to pull everyone together, and everyone's busy, and it was the holidays. I had a question about what you said. When, at the meeting, it sounded like there was an impasse at the meeting, and then, so you didn't discuss any of these conditions with, at the meeting? It was later that you followed up and sent that to them, an email? Is that what I heard?
That's exactly correct. At the meeting on December 14th, you know, our intent was to go and really have an open discussion about what the expectations were and how we could really navigate this and to try and be at least as close to a win-win as possible. And it was shared with us that the win on their part, it was no change. And obviously, the win on our part was a moderate change. And the discussion was that there was an ambition that perhaps we brought some level of compromise ideas to that meeting, but not knowing what the expectations on compromise were, whether it be decibel, time of day, type of music, instruments used. We, there's a plethora of opportunities that we may or may not have been able to bring to the table, and we really wanted to talk through it, which is why, when the expectation was shared that we actually have some compromises, we actually went back to our kind of home base and said, listen, let's put something out there.
It sounds reasonable. Now, would your, would your, I didn't have an expectation you'd have the sound engineer that did the study come in again, but, I mean, the ideas for the conditions, I know one of them came up at our last meeting about the percussion. As far as the other ones, would your, would you believe that your sound engineer that did the study would agree that those were good mitigations for reducing?
Well, certainly. The sound engineer is very specific, saying that if there was a sound monitor that showed very specific decibels at any particular moment, that would achieve the result of determining whether we were within or was not within the criteria. The second thing, we did go back to him and said, if we projected sound away from Broadway. Now, there's going to be some rebound off the building, but it is not going to have the same effect of projecting sound directly towards Broadway, and he thought that was probably a good recommendation.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Just so I can look at the whole picture again. As I read this, you have a restriction of 36, up to 36 seats out there, and you cannot have the sound, or, says the outdoor seating shall not be used for banquet, reception, or conference purposes. So what is it going to be used for?
The area that you're referring to, Commissioner, is actually the restaurant seating area, which is the upper patio area, and has been discussed in every one of these meetings that the distinction between the upper area and the lower area of the courtyard are two distinct areas, and the conditional use permit defines the upper seating area of 36 seats and does not specifically say anything in reference to the lower area.
So it's your understanding there are no restrictions on the number of people in the lower area?
As my understanding is that we are not allowed to have amplified noise outside. When we purchased the hotel in 2012, we were not aware, but very quickly became keenly aware of the challenge on the conditional use permit and made significant efforts to change the way we do business to accommodate that. The interpretation that has been shared with us by the Town of Los Gatos is that they are two distinct areas, and theoretically, the policy of the conditional use does not apply to the courtyard and only applies to the upper seating area.
So, just to say that again, if it doesn't apply to it, and I'm reading the language now, it says total seating shall not exceed 130. Now, does that apply to both balconies, or both?
The 36 seat?
No, 130. One, condition two says total seating. Total seating shall not exceed 130.
Okay.
Is that both?
I believe that's actually the occupancy permit for our restaurant. I don't know. I don't have it in front of me. I'm sorry.
And I think staff can help you, maybe, prior to closing the public hearing.
I'm curious as to his understanding, because he's running it. If he doesn't know what the restriction is, that's, you know what the restriction is, but I'm curious what he's operating under.
Okay.
What do you think you're operating under?
I believe that we are operating under the conditional use permit that restricts amplified music on our outdoor area.
And there are two specific limitations, one on seating and one on total people. One's 130, and one's 36. You're telling me the 36 only applies, as I recall, to the upper?
Correct.
And I'm asking you whether...
And the 130 implies the restaurant seating, and none of the seating restrictions or restrictions you mentioned have anything to do with the courtyard, is my understanding.
So there's no limitation in your mind as to the number of people in the lower area? Is that right?
Well, I believe that there is probably a fire code ordinance on how many people we can have. I don't believe there's any conditional use restriction in reference to that.
Thank you.
So I have a question for staff. Is it up to us to determine what that outdoor seating area is? Because it doesn't say on the CUP, whether it's the upper or the lower. It just says outdoor seating shall not exceed 36. So is this an interpretation for us to make?
This is the Town's interpretation and Town's reading of the conditional use permit. It's consistent with other readings of that that took place in 2011, and the issue before you tonight is specifically entertainment and only that condition, as, again, outlined in the Council policy.
Agreed. Commissioner O'Donnell, yes?
Notwithstanding that, it'd be nice if we understood this. And I guess I'm saying, when you look at the existing conditional use permit, it says total seating. I take the word total to mean total. It says total seating shall not exceed 130. I would assume that means to the whole, to the applicant. Now, I don't know, but that's what it says. So you're going to tell me it means something and it doesn't say? Is that right? Okay. So how does one find out what it means to what it doesn't say?
So as was, that Ms. Sarnowitz, all the way back to 2011, which I think is one of the contentions that the neighbors have, how it was interpreted before, and it's how it has been interpreted, is the total seat count of 130 applies to the restaurant use, which includes the upper patio area. There is no limitation on seats or occupants, other than potentially fire occupancy code for the courtyard. And so that total 130 seats is for the restaurant use in total, and so if, for instance, if they put their total maximum of 36 outside, then they could only have 94 inside. The total for the restaurant use, which would be the indoor and that upper raised patio, is 130 seats total. is one-hundred and thirty seats total.
But there's no limitation on the lower area?
Correct.
Except whatever the fire department...
Fire, correct.
And have we ever explored how much noise is simply generated by large crowds in that area?
Well, I believe the noise report looks at background noise. The noise assessment actually looked at that and included it in their noise assessment and how to stay within the limits of the town's noise ordinance. That's actually in the noise assessment that was done.
The noise, I don't recall the noise assessment assessing a non-existing condition, that is to say, a large group of people unlimited except by fire code.
To clarify, I think that the noise assessment looked at ambient noise that exists. So, that would not account for the instance that you're accounting for and so, no, I don't believe it took that into consideration.
I'm just trying to get if we could tighten this up a little bit because it's a, I don't doubt that your interpretation, but to the reader, it doesn't spring out at you as being what it says.
Agreed.
So, I'm just trying to clarify in my own mind what that means. Okay, and then it says the outdoor seating, but that means the restaurant outdoor seating?
That is the thirty-six seats in the raised patio area.
So, the lower patio area could have banquets, receptions and conferences?
Courtyard, yes. It's the courtyard.
So, what's the advantage then of limiting the, with the thirty-six? How does that help anything?
Well, I think it's a smaller area, that raised patio area, so I'm assuming that when this came through originally or when it came back before, they looked at, you know, how many seats could we put out there reasonably and thirty-six probably was that number, would be my assumption.
Has nothing to do with noise then?
It does not.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson?
As I was listening to this line of questioning, and this is more of a question for staff, it seems to me that the conditional use permit might be a bit out of date in terms of the use of the property, I mean, because you have this much larger courtyard area that's going to be, where this entertainment is going to be held and then there's nothing other than the town's entertainment policy that applies to that. It just seems odd that we wouldn't, it wouldn't, there wouldn't be anything other than the fire code when we actually have numbers for the restaurant upstairs.
Well, again, I'd reiterate, we're here solely for the noise as required. And so, whether or not there may be additional modifications that someone may want to bring forward in the future, that is definitely something that could be done. If there are concerns by the commission and they think that there should be some additional limitation absent fire code or less than fire code, the problem is, we don't know what fire code is, so we couldn't tell you where that starting point is. That fewer people in that area may be appropriate in this instance, that could be factored into an additional condition or a recommendation to council as it moves forward, that that be looked at and that consideration be given to reducing or limiting the number of people allowed in that courtyard area.
Or maybe even just knowing what it would be. Okay, that's fine. So, it would be within our purview to ask the council and consider that as in our recommendation?
Yes, because as it relates to the noise and the entertainment, that does go with that topic.
Okay. Commissioner O'Donnell?
If we believe that the number of people present outdoors has an impact on sound, I assume that would be within the purview of what we're doing.
Which is, yes, which is what I was just trying to illustrate.
Okay, but I understood you to say, if we're simply interested in a condition which does not relate to noise, that's not before us, is that right?
So, I'll try to restate this again. The issue is the courtyard area that does not currently have a limitation other than fire occupancy code. That is one of the areas where noise and entertainment is proposed and so, if the commission has concerns because of the sheer number that could be out there and they want to limit that number to something less than occupancy, fire occupants, fire code occupancy, then they could make that part of their recommendation for the courtyard area, that that be limited in some fashion.
Okay. I'm sorry for being dense on this, but I want to make sure I get it straight. The noise that we're talking about does not relate to the outdoor seating, which shall not exceed thirty-six, it only relates to the lower area, is that right?
It's the entertainment and just for, hopefully not to muddy the waters further, the noise ordinance applies everywhere, whether it's that upper area, the indoor area with the doors open, the courtyard without entertainment, noise ordinance applies no matter what. So, this is to allow entertainment in these areas and out there.
I understand that, but this particular use permit basically says, you can't have this kind of entertainment and it doesn't make a difference where it is outdoors, you can't have it. Now, we're trying to, the town in its wisdom has changed that and I just want to make sure it's clear and it's not very clear. So, if we say, yes, you may have entertainment until ten o'clock and no, you can't have percussion and all that, I would like it to be clear. This use permit is not at all clear and would be told, well, you can't clear it up because that's a different matter and we only have sound. But to the extent that we want to deal with sound, I think we can clear up those matters which might otherwise interfere with our decision on sound. And for example, it isn't clear to me at all and when we're talking about music, it will be restricted to the area which can have unlimited numbers of people. But if that's the case, then we ought to say that. So, I'm just suggesting that if we were to pass this, we make it clear. Secondly, I think it would be nice to know that the seating shall not exceed thirty-six in a given area and we specify that because this all gets to sound. And the one-hundred and thirty, I take it, you're saying is both levels, I think you said that, I don't know, no, maybe you said it was just a restaurant. So, thirty-six outdoors and the balance indoors are back and forth. Well, none of that is clear. So, if we're going to try to say, because the council has told everybody in town, yeah, you can, we're trying to be Campbell or something and we want to have music and all that, so the town has said that and now we're supposed to do something with that and I'm saying, should we decide to follow the council's lead, I sure would hope we could make it clear. So, I don't believe that being restricted from the use permit in general, I would agree with that, but insofar as it might affect the sound that we're dealing with, I think there are a number of things here that ought to be cleared up. So, I just throw that out because if you or our council says, wait a minute, we're getting too far afield, I'd like to know that.
I'll be the first to tell you if you go too far afield, but no, you're absolutely right. You certainly have the ability, if you have concerns over the outdoor entertainment and that you believe that that could be mitigated by having a lesser than the fire code occupancy in that downward area, yes, you can. What you can't do is now reopen the thirty-six outside seating that they have for the restaurant and say, I think that's too much, I think twenty should be there. But certainly, in the area where they plan on having outdoor entertainment, yes, you could put occupancy limits on that.
I agree with you, but I'm just saying, where it says total seating shall not...
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Where it says, outdoor seating shall not exceed thirty-six, I'm not suggesting we change anything, we just make it clear. That means not outdoor seating, it means outdoor seating as to a specified area. And we say that because you people will not be here forever and I sure won't be, so it might be nice if we said that. Secondly, the total seating shall not exceed one-hundred and thirty, we ought to say what that means too. So, that is not going to changing it, it's to follow your interpretation of what this thing should have said. Then, I think we can deal with the sound issues. So, I just wanted to see if that would fly and if I understand council, we could do that.
Commissioner Birch?
Do we have any speaker cards on this item?
We do and we're getting ready for them. Any further questions for the applicant? See none, thank you very much.
Do I have any additional time left?
No, you'll have five minutes to come back later.
Okay, thank you.
After the speakers from the public. All right, I will now invite comments from members of the public. Comments are limited to three minutes. Our first speaker tonight is Tom Richards.
What am I supposed to say? I forget my name and I think I live at sixty-two Broadway, Tom Richards.
Thank you, that's perfect.
So, let's see, there's been discussion about a number of instruments to be limited here, I think the bass drums, there's obvious things like French horns, trombones and amplified guitars. But when we're talking about sixty-seven to seventy-two decibels, I think it's worth mentioning that normal speech, so Commissioner O'Donnell, if you didn't have your amplified voice, you'd probably be around sixty to seventy decibels and we're looking for this to be limited to sixty-seven to seventy-two. So, it's not much higher than you probably speak when you're a little excited. But some non-obvious instruments that also exceed this level include violins, challows, oboes, flutes, piccolos, clarinets and harps. And that is not amplified, that's not if somebody's banging on them, that's just at a general use and performing music. So, this isn't a, these aren't instruments that you can turn down and I think they're looking to play live instruments there. So, I'm not quite sure how overall the sound could be limited to a level that is roughly equal to somebody speaking relative, not loudly, but just talking excitedly with a friend. So, I think that's worth thinking through because I don't think that's really been mentioned and I don't think a lot of people have brought what these numbers mean to real things that we understand, like speaking amongst two people and then when you start talking about, it's not thirty-six people, it's one-hundred and thirty or however many people they'll fit in their conference, that gets really loud really quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? See none, thank you. Gail Randolph?
Hi, Gail Randolph, forty-two Broadway. I have a background that includes education and experience with creativity, art, conflict resolution and problem solving. I love this stuff, I base my life on it. And I was thinking a lot about solutions to the idea of entertainment in the patio and courtyard of the toll house adjacent to the Broadway neighborhood. I seriously was trying to think about a win-win, which is, a win-win way, which is the title of the curriculum I wrote for my school district, but I keep coming back to the main idea, the big picture. This whole problem was solved in nineteen ninety-five. Situations like this were anticipated and in order to approve the whole project, the CUP was written and the entirety was approved. It was very specific. We breathed a sigh of relief and wholeheartedly, we embraced the idea and the reality of a hotel being our next door neighbor. What better choice could there be? You know, we had a years-long test of the CUP culminating about two thousand eight and the CUP withstood the test. Now, imagine for a moment that your neighbors had a major event in their backyard. Every weekend, Friday, Saturday and Sunday throughout the year, they had invited all their friends and friends of friends and they cheered and they played music and they had a mic and they did plays and skits and they had a good time. You'd be happy for them for the first few times and then it would get old really fast. You wanted to have your family over and sit in your backyard and barbecue and talk, but the neighbors' actively, activity overrode yours. This is what our neighbors in the apartment space over there, as well as up the street a few houses and across the street and up a few houses there. We all like to live downtown. We accept the limited, predictable and random sounds of summer jazz, children playing in the fountains, the fire engine bringing Santa to the plazas, people coming and going to the post office, walking to the hardware store. It's the ordinary sounds of life in Los Gatos. It's pleasant and cozy, really. Of course, I advocate for leaving the CUP as it is, it's a good thing.
Thank you, Ms. Randolph. Any questions? See none, thank you very much. Michael Verga?
I'm Mike Verga, I'm at forty-six Broadway. I'd just like to make one comment before I get into what I was planning on saying and that is that I did talk to the town council members that put this thing together and they're refuting everything that is coming out of the town position right now. As for the thirty-six seats that you can put on the patio, literally, you couldn't put thirty-six seats on that patio unless you stacked them practically on top of each other and you certainly could not serve dinner or lunch on that patio with thirty-six seats there. It is way too small, it's about a twelve-by-thirty area. What I did want to start to talk about is that, I would like to make a few comments about filing complaints with the town. Over the years, I have attended many planning commission and town council meetings and has been asked on numerous occasions to town staff, well, how many complaints have you received over this or that particular problem? I've come to find that the most common answer from staff is usually, there's not too many complaints or very few. I find that answer usually to be quite misleading. People have many reasons not to file a complaint. It takes too much time, I'm already laying in bed, I don't want to get up, maybe someone else will do it, but by far, the most common reason for not filing a complaint is, well, what good would it do? The one and only reason people do file a complaint is because they feel it might actually do something, make a difference, that the problem might get resolved. I talked to the tenants at twenty-five Broadway, the apartment building directly in front of the courtyard, literally steps away from the courtyard. Did the town reach out to investigate any problems the tenants at twenty-five Broadway may be having with the toll house? Did the toll house ask the tenants if they had any problems? No, but I did. And the tenants, they told me how disruptive the receptions and conferences can be to their peace and quiet. Do they complain? No. Why? Well, what good would it do? The town has taken the ridiculous position that the toll house isn't even in violation of their CUP, which is completely refuted by the actual wording of the CUP and by the members of the town council that put the CUP in place. We spoke with them. But nonetheless, the town ignores the CUP. So, I ask, what good would it do to complain? No wonder the tenants at twenty-five Broadway don't complain, all they would get would be excuses, no resolution. This absolutely makes me and my fellow residents feel quite concerned about relying on a noise ordinance and the futility of filing complaints. I'll cut it short here. You know, we don't have the resources to fight this like people that are getting paid to be here. So, we're asking the planning commission to stick up for us. Please do so and hear our complaint and don't change the CUP.
Thank you, Mr. Verga. Questions? Commissioner O'Donnell has a question for you, Mr. Verga.
It would be helpful to me if you could give me a better description of how you see interpretation today from the way you read the conditional use permit.
Well, there's a number of reasons. I know from Gail that when the courtyard in the hotel moved in, that they were very, very specific about that courtyard and how large it was and how a crowd could form into that courtyard and how noisy that would be. And that's why they limited the outdoor seating area to thirty-six, that includes the courtyard. This interpretation that it's the patio, to me, is a ridiculous, it's not only my feeling it's ridiculous because you couldn't barely fit thirty-six seats on the patio, but I talked to Steve Blanton, my wife talked to Joanne Benjamin. That's not true with what's going on here. That courtyard is the thirty-six seats and it was done, as Gail knows from the history, because they know, they were smart enough to realize, as Tom spoke of, when you get a crowd into a courtyard and as the tenants at twenty-five Broadway have confirmed, the crowd itself is louder, the crowd itself is louder than number one Broadway, which has a live band, but it's indoors. Anyway, that's, you know, the research that I've done about it.
That's helpful to me, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Verga. Larry Lenhart?
So, I'm Larry Lenhart, I live at thirty Broadway. I did host the gentleman to come by the house about three weeks ago and it was great after three strikes at the ball, that these guys came up and said, okay, we'll throw in something, we'll not have drums on the outside of the patio, which was a great step. I wish we'd had those conversations a long time ago so we actually could have had maybe some dialogue that had worked. When I thought a lot about it and I looked back and listened to Mr. Verga and other areas, I realized that one thing that we're trying to do is we're trying to pass something on top of a CUP that's being wrongly interpreted and I don't think we should do that. I think we should go back and figure out the right interpretation of that CUP before we agree to put something else on top of it. I mean, that's really the rule of law. As Mike highlighted from that perspective, we did talk to the town council who had actually written that CUP before and their interpretation is extraordinary, not extraordinary, but very different than what the folks are interpreting it today. And so, I'd encourage us to get that correct before we actually put something on top of it because alls we're doing is putting something on top of something that's interpreted incorrectly and I would implore us to do that. Great example, the thirty-six seats, I mean, Mike's actually right, there's no way that that's the case. Our belief and the way that's written is the toll house, the toll house in general. Our belief and the way that's written is the Toll House, the Toll House in general, has 130 folks in the environment, inside and outside. That includes the inside, but only 36 people outside, and no activities outside, such as banquets and others. And that's really how it's written, and that was the spirit of the creation of the CUP. Thank you.
Thank you. Gillian Verga?
Hello again. Hi, Maria. My name is Gillian Verga, and I live at 46 Broadway. I am one of the neighbors who supported the letter that you have in your packet, and I'd like to point out two additional things. First of all, you can see that there's a handful of residents who've put a lot of time and energy into this issue. We were here on September 14th for almost an hour and a half, again, on November 9th for almost two hours, and now we're here again. And you can be sure that if this does go to the town council, we'll be at those meetings as well. We're not doing this because we're paid. We're doing this because it really makes a difference to the impact on our lives if there's noise on our street. And second, I'd like to point out that this issue doesn't really seem that particularly important to the Toll House. They were asked to reach out to the neighbors at the September meeting, and they did not do that. At the November meeting, they were specifically told that they needed to do outreach to the neighbors. They waited almost a month and finally reached out right at the beginning of the holiday season on December 5th. And, you know, to be honest, when somebody says to me, "Oh, I really want to listen to you," and they say that after they've been specifically told they have to say that, it doesn't really feel that genuine to me. When we did meet with them, they honestly did not offer any particularly creative or new ideas about how to compromise, and it didn't appear to me that they had put much effort into understanding the concerns that we had expressed at the previous three and a half hours of the planning commission meetings. When we started this process back in September, I believed that we could compromise. I believed there was a way to instate the CUP with entertainment with certain restrictions. I no longer see that as a viable option. If the Toll House and the town had been honest with us about how the current CUP is being violated, then that might have created a basis for discussion and trust. If the Toll House had demonstrated that they were serious about understanding our needs and concerns, then we would have been ready to listen. But they've come to the table too little, too late, and not offering much to us. This is the third meeting on the subject. I really hope it's the last. Outdoor entertainment in the middle of a residential neighborhood is just a bad idea. Please deny this CUP change.
Ms. Verga, you mentioned during your statements that at one point in time, you could have considered a compromise with certain restrictions. Can you describe what that might have been?
Yeah, actually, in the November 9th meeting, I listed out a number of things that I thought were possibilities. You know, they could have certainly watched the video to see that.
Thank you. Lee Quintana?
Lee Quintana, 5 Palm Avenue. I'd like to ask if I could see a copy of the CUP. I couldn't pull it up on my computer. My questions have to do with process. My understanding, and I would love through the chair to ask staff for correction on this if I'm not interpreting right, my understanding is that because the Toll House has a CUP which restricts entertainment, they need to come in and change that item of the CUP, but no other portion of the CUP can be addressed. The staff report, I believe, says that music before 10 o'clock PM is allowed by right. And yet, the CUP is now saying, "Yes, but we're putting the requirements of entertainment after 10 o'clock on it," which doesn't make any sense to me just right there. It would seem like if you have to do that, maybe it's not a good idea to have entertainment in the courtyard because of the noise. I do remember the CUP states that two amplifiers on the north wall, but it doesn't say a maximum of two total amplifiers, period, on the north wall. It doesn't have anything in it that I'm aware of that says how often the sound has to be monitored, how it's recorded, how it's passed on, how it's, any part of that is implemented. It seems like there's so many questions on this that it either should be denied, or it should be continued before all of the questions that have been raised can be answered. But what I wanted to look at the CUP conditions was because I remember reading that one of the conditions was that the courtyard could not be used for banquets, conferences, et cetera, et cetera, that it would be open to the general public, which if I'm understanding this correctly, that would not be the case if this were to go through. But I don't have the CUP to look at.
Ms. Quintana, I actually have a copy of the CUP. I don't know if staff would like me to share it, or I can read a couple of the sentences that you might be referring to. I believe your time is almost up, so it's got to be very quick.
Okay, it's number seven, and the replacement for number seven, but I think outdoor seating, service hours.
Number seven says, "No music, entertainment, or amplified sound shall be allowed in the courtyard." And actually, the time is up. Any questions for Ms. Quintana? See none. Thank you.
All right. The applicant is invited back for five minutes to address the commission.
Thank you again. I would like to just kind of give my spin on a couple of the things that were discussed tonight. The interpretation of the conditional use permit is actually not a part of this discussion. We've gone back to this, but really, the kind of the transparency of our business to try and work with everybody, to try and understand that on June 21st, when the policy changed, we came forward and said, "Hey, should this not apply to us as well?" And we began the process. There's been a number of discussions about whether or not our outreach met or did not meet the requirements or expectations. I would like to clarify one very specific point. It was mentioned that our October 5th or 6th event, that was really a jazz-on-the-plaza event, actually was a catalyst from the September planning commission meeting where we actually invited via mail, snail mail, next door, a number of different venues. And our intent was to try and get as many of the Broadway neighbors as possible. And when we were hosting an event, obviously, we didn't want to have an event that very few people showed up at, so we expanded our invitation list to many more. So, and obviously, it was all Los Gatos residents, but our intent was really to try and bring forward what our courtyard was, who we were. And one of the things that came up was that, and this goes back for those of you that have been through all three of these meetings, is that in 2012, when we purchased the property and became aware of the conditional use permit, we've obliged for four years now, almost five. And we've been very respectful of the noise, our use of that space, but on June 21st, when the policy changed, we believed that the policy should apply to us as well. There is noise ordinances that apply to those. I believe that those should apply to us just like anybody else. I believe that all the restrictions that are in place legally that apply to everybody else should apply to us, and we're willing to put additional conditions on it that would apply to us only. But by having a policy change and on the website specifically identifying that a modification to your conditional use permit is all that's required in order for you to be eligible for a policy change, really doesn't really apply here. I understand that there's much more, I don't know, cosmic opportunities here. But because we've been good neighbors, I mean, we went back and we asked the town to go back and look, and let's go back two years. How many complaints have they had regarding noise for the Toll House Hotel? And the answer is zero. How many issues have we had at the Toll House Hotel that have involved the police? The only events that are registered are ones that we recorded when we had incidents inside the hotel where we needed police assistance. There's never been an outside, in my experience, in the four years plus that I've been there, where there's been any noise or interaction with the police or any law enforcement regarding activity in the building. You know, there's a question as to whether or not we've demonstrated good faith. There's a lot of questions as to whether or not we comply or don't comply with the policy. There's a lot of discussion as to whether or not we've done our due diligence based upon the request of this group. You know, I find myself a little dismayed that I absolutely respect the position of our residents, but I also believe that there's a very clear parameter on how this policy is to be enacted, and I'm frustrated that we're not allowed to enact the policy, just as any other business in this town, within the parameters that are legally guided. We know what they are. We've done 20-plus-thousand dollars worth of investment to make sure that we've met the criteria of what the planning commission has asked, and we find ourselves being told that this is a resident versus business, and we have a policy that says what we can and can't do. Why can't we operate within the boundaries of the policies and laws that exist, just like any other business?
Thank you, Mr. Gurney. Questions for the applicant? Commissioner Birch?
So on the new conditions of approval that we have in front of us, one of the items says that the owner shall implement at their cost all recommendations identified by the noise assessment, which I assume this is the paragraph that also will, yeah, that also includes the monitoring. So just based on, because it's been a little while, what is your understanding of what kind of monitoring they're requiring that you do based on the Salzer study?
Well, we went back to the sound engineers, and there's a specific model, and I'm sorry, I can't quote it right here, of a decibel meter that we can put in very specific locations that scientifically cannot be challenged, will determine as to what point the sound decibel is at that location, and exactly what the sound decibel will be at locations throughout the sound study that were done. And therefore, we can determine that at what sound decibel we are at, as to whether or not we are within or not within the decibel requirements of the ordinance.
May I ask a follow-up question based on that?
Of course, Commissioner Birch.
So then, based on that, these monitors would be set in place around the courtyard or in various locations. So let's say that there was an event going on, and my understanding, and I want to make sure it's your understanding, the cap on the noise level, if you've got a group of noisy people in there, their volume alone might mean you don't ever get to turn the music on, because they alone are loud, because the sound is the sound. What's producing the sound doesn't matter. The cap is the sound. So let's say you do happen to have an event and people get loud, and we get a call from the neighbors, or the town gets a call. Your understanding then is that someone can walk over, look at this monitor, go, "Oh, my gosh, yes, we are over." Cut the music, or we've got to do something to eliminate noise here immediately, and that that is how that this would be monitored within your own facility. And that is something that if our compliance officer was called, they would have access to this monitor to be able to look at it and say, "Yeah, you were over," and, you know, "That's one ding, and you have to bring the volume down." I just want to make sure that you're understanding what my interpretation of this is.
Actually, my interpretation is a little more aggressive than that. I think that we would have, because we have a significant amount of leadership that's on the property, we would actually be logging these meters on regular bases to show that we are actively checking that monitor, to not waiting to think that, "Are we over, are we not?" If we can be checking this on periodic, whether it be half-hour or hourly basis, based upon the activity of the thing. But you're absolutely right, Commissioner, is that it doesn't matter what the activity is on the courtyard. Sound is going to be sound, no matter what type of sound is created, and the decibels, whether they be combined or independent, are going to create a certain decibel level, and us monitoring that will be able to prevent from any violation of the existing ordinances.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Janoff?
Just a question regarding the sound study. On the day that that was conducted, were the neighbors made aware that that was the case? And did the neighbors have an opportunity to provide any input from their backyard saying, "Wow, I don't hear anything," or, "Wow, I hear a lot"? Was there any kind of collaboration on that study with the neighbors?
That's a great question. And unfortunately, at the last two meetings, we actually discussed that. We actually went out with the sound engineers to the neighborhood. We were fortunate enough to have one of our neighbors that are here present volunteer their property to actually put a sound meter on. And when we actually conducted the sound test, we were out at that location on Broadway, standing there, measuring the decibels on our courtyard. And I'd like to share that the decibel levels on the courtyard, in our opinion, were in excess of what we would ever do, because they would insult the customers in the guestrooms adjacent to the courtyard, and it was not discernible at the locations that were described.
Sure.
And is that true generally, that the neighbors had no feedback regarding the sound study at that time, other than the instance you're describing, where you were there and the neighbor said, "I don't hear much"? Was that just one neighbor?
No. There was some pretty intense dialogue, that, you know, the historical behavior of the hotel prior to our purchasing it had kind of left a stain that could not be erased on how the hotel, the previous owners had behaved, and not monitored, and not adhered to any type of decibel ordinance management. And the fear of going back to that risk was too great to move forward with any compromise on the existing conditional use permit. And I agree with that. You know what? It's funny, because we had not challenged it based upon that reality. Had the policy not changed on June 21st, we wouldn't be here.
Any further questions? See none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The public testimony portion of the hearing is now closed. Do commissioners have questions, comments, or emotion? And Commissioner O'Donnell?
I have questions, staff, and you folks can sort out who should answer it. Would you explain to me again, when the town changed the rule, so to speak, the idea was that, if I recall correctly, that it was a blanket change. Now, that would not affect an existing condition in the use permit, which is why we're here. But if one didn't have a use permit restriction, then without anything further, would that mean that person could have entertainment up to 10 o'clock?
That's correct.
So?
Within the noise ordinance, yes.
So if I understand, the applicant here is saying, everybody, arguably, many people in town are going to be treated differently than we're treated, and that's because we have a restriction that they don't have. And because they don't have the restriction, suddenly, without having to go get permission, they have permission. Is that what it is?
Correct. But, I mean, we certainly knew this was an issue that would come up, that there were three types of conditional use permits that were issued, ones that allowed for entertainment, ones that specifically said you can have entertainment, and other ones that said you can have entertainment once we get done with the policy. And so for those ones that specifically said there was no entertainment in their CUP, some of them might have just been blanketed. It might not have been a community compatibility issue. They might have just been stuck in there, because that's what we were doing at the time, is just denying entertainment if they weren't allowed. But there are ones, and specifically this one, that there are potentially compatibility problems with the neighborhood. So just because the council has an act and ordinance that says you can do entertainment before 10:00 PM, does not mean that your hands are tied and you can say, "Oh, my gosh, we have to allow it."
So that getting back to the other issue, then it wouldn't be fair to say, "You're treating us differently,"
No.
Because from day one, we said if it were the case that one had the restriction or Because from day one, we said if it were the case that one had the restriction for a good and sufficient reason unrelated to a general rule, then we're to visit that and decide whether that good and sufficient reason exists, or whether it could be conditioned. So, I just wanted to see if it's right.
And, and to look at it even, in fact, if a new applicant comes forward with a new restaurant entertainment component, and says he wants to do entertainment before 10:00 PM, and wants to follow that policy, this body or council could certainly put a condition in their specific CUP that does not allow entertainment before 10:00 PM.
For the commission's reference, exhibit number seven has the policy regulating entertainment. Should you be inclined to, to look at it? Any further comments? Commissioner Hansen?
Um, I didn't bring my policy with me, but I, so I had a question about that, so it's a quick one. And then I had a, another question about the noise ordinance. The, um, the entertainment policy allows, um, outdoor music seven days a week.
Before 10:00 PM, by right.
There's no, there's no restriction on what days it is, or anything like that, or, okay. Relative to the, um, the way this works, and this works for anyone that's doing this, they're allowed to have, uh, outdoor music, entertainment until 10 o'clock. They're always subject to the noise ordinance.
That's correct.
And then, um, there isn't any requirement on any, because of the by right, for anyone else to be monitoring the noise? Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, they would be doing it, if someone was doing it, they would be doing it voluntarily?
Correct. Unless it's written in, again, as the attorney noted, in a CUP specifically.
Okay. And I, I did, um, I didn't know this, but if, uh, I, I don't know enough about monitoring devices, is, um, are there monitoring devices out there, or do you know, that would retain the history? Because I thought about the question that came up, where the applicants monitoring the, supposing we go forward that they're monitoring this, but then we need to have a compliance officer come out and verify it. Is it just real-time data, or, you know, is there availability for tracking these things? Because I, I think it, under, if, if there was possible to move forward with this, that would be really an essential part of it, for me, that, that you could go back and have the proof of what happened, that anyone could look at.
So, that could definitely be in a recommendation to council?
We don't have that information, whether or not that, that type of device exists. Uh, but that clearly could be part of the direction, and then it would be, um, on the applicants, uh, to, to try to justify, or show what there are, or if there are not those types of devices, how that would work.
Commissioner Birch?
A few times it came up that the hotel is violating its existing conditional use permit. So I did want to re-ask the question. Do we know of any current violations, or any violations that have occurred in the last two, three years?
We have, we researched calls for service relating to noise, uh, over the last two years, and, um, in the area, but didn't find any related to this hotel, other than the one mentioned, um, that where the hotel called about a specific, I guess, perhaps a guest, um, someone inside the hotel.
Okay.
But, so that's confirmed, yes, with the police department.
Thanks. Can I ask one other question, please? Commissioner Birch?
Um, based on the conversation that Commissioner O'Donnell had had earlier, and taking a look at the conditions of approval, um, were we to move forward, would we be able to take items two, three, and five, and tighten up the language on those, as Commissioner O'Donnell requested, clarifying what those locations are defined as? Number two is the total seating, number three is outdoor seating, number five is outdoor seating use. So if, if we are to move forward, are those items that we could ask to be clarified, so when we've all retired and moved on, it's clear in here which those areas are?
That can be part of your recommendation, and then council could make that ultimate determination. Again, back to 2011, when this was last, before the commission, that interpretation, I think, even goes before that, um, how staff is currently interpreting it, so it's not something we just made up whimsically.
Oh, sure.
This has been how we have been interpreting this for many years. Um, but those can be part of the recommendations, and then we'll look deeper in, into whether or not it crosses that border of, uh, we're asking for entertainment, you know, the 130 applies to the indoor restaurant as well, we're talking about outdoor entertainment in this instance, so is that crossing a boundary?
Sure.
But those can be part of the recommendation.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Hansen?
A, a related question to that, um, there, one of the issues seems to be that there, the, the residents feel that the, the existing conditional use permit was to be interpreted a certain way, and they talked to the previous council members, and then staff has a interpretation that they've been following for years. So, my question to staff is, the, um, existing management of the Toll House, though, has been following your direction and, and has not been committing any violations based on your interpretation of the CUP. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
I will provide my input, and my position hasn't changed from the last hearing. There's too many variables with the sound study, the monitoring that goes along with it, the code enforcement that gets done in town. We may have hired a code enforcement officer to work evenings, but they can be cut with budget cuts, so enforcement could be a problem. I believe that this CUP was carefully crafted at the time with the residential neighborhood in close proximity, and that it considered that quite carefully, and specifically excluding outdoor music. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I, I may be wrong, uh, but my experience with sound studies was that you can have a, a piece of equipment that will, uh, when it records, uh, keep a written record. So I think that is, certainly from my personal experience, that is something that exists, so that could be done. My problem here is that none of us were present at the creation, i.e., when the use permit came into, came into being. Uh, I'm prepared to, well, at that time, we were a lot stricter, I think, on, on this whole area, and I think the council, after looking at various economic matters, and I'm not criticizing it all, after serious considerations, said, you know, we ought to kind of change our overall policy. And they did. But, they also said, however, if you already have a restriction, that doesn't override that, uh, that restriction. So the question, I think, before us is, um, we don't have to worry about treating these people differently, we just have to decide whether the restriction is a reasonable restriction, that if we were to soften, or change, or get rid of, uh, from a use permit standpoint, is that a wise thing to do? Now, I'm, I'm kind of troubled, because if it goes up, when it goes up to the, uh, the council, they might say, well, gosh, we think the people ought to be able to have this and just do it. We have an opportunity at the moment, perhaps, to both tighten up that portion of the use permit which relates to this, which I think could be helpful. If we, on the other hand, say, you know, these people that live there rely on the fact that there isn't any entertainment, and that's, uh, not, not an unreasonable position. So if we say we're just going to go with that, then I don't, we don't have the opportunity to tighten, or to make, tie, to tighten up on a recommendation. We could, on the other hand, I think, for the record's sake, say, even if we were to say, we're going to, we would recommend denial of the request for modification. However, should the council determine to grant it, we would suggest to the council, they look at, and you, for example, had said certain paragraphs, which I agree with, and anything else. So I, this is a difficult one for me, because I certainly think that the hotel has been more forthcoming than many people would be. I think that, uh, the residents say, this is really going to upset our lives, and I believe that. So it, it's a tough problem. Um, so I'm going to just throw that out, and I'm not going to personally reach a conclusion yet, because I'd sure like to hear some of my fellow commissioners weigh in.
Commissioner Birch?
So, I'll weigh in on my thoughts on this. I'm actually inclined, um, with some tightening of some language, to follow staff's, sorry, I still have this cold, recommendation of approval, and I will tell you why. Um, I've probably had the benefit of being involved in a lot more sound studies than most people. Um, and I happen to know that 69 decibels is about the equivalent of a vacuum, if you're standing right at it. That, that's pretty much your equivalent that you're looking at. And obviously, the sound dissipates as you move away from it. Um, I do know, based on conversations that we've had, that the old owners clearly took what the town had asked for and said, we don't care. Um, we all have heard about it, some of us experienced it. But I do feel that if someone else has purchased it and is attempting to make things right, they should be allowed to do so. And by putting in place a monitoring device, I would probably also look through some feedback from my fellow commissioners, in having perhaps some type of checkpoint. And, and I guess the way I keep framing this up in my mind is what we did with the school and the traffic, that we said that in certain amount of time, you're going to turn over all of this monitoring that you've been doing, and we are going to have an opportunity to review it, and if, at that time, you have continually blown by the noise, we're revoking this. You know, I, I, I feel like there should be an opportunity given, and if the opportunity cannot be met by the hotel, well, then the opportunity is gone. Um, I feel that there definitely is some tightening I, I would want in here, not only with the seating, which I actually just think is for future, we, we will all eventually retire, and if this comes up in 20 years, we want people to know what we were thinking. Um, I am also going to, I want, on the noise assessment, the monitoring clarified on the type of device, and what our expectation will be about reports given. Um, I also, um, would look to my fellow commissioners for some feedback. I do not feel that noise should be allowed that late Monday through Thursday. Um, I'm going to be sensitive to those that live adjacent, that have children. Homework and things that go on, um, no matter what your best intentions are, if that keeps a small child up, or you've got a toddler, you're trying to get in bed, that's a problem. But most events, and weddings and things, are going to happen on the weekends anyways. So I would look to my commissioners for comments on those. But if those type of, if that kind of language could be tightened, clarified, and we could have some type of a limit set on a reporting back to us, I would be inclined, inclined to recommend approval.
Commissioner Hansen?
Um, thank you, Commissioner Birch, because you, uh, said about a lot of the things that I had on my mind. I, um, we, we, when we had the last hearing, I, I think I said, you know, that, that, you know, we, this is a tough problem, as Commissioner O'Donnell said, it's to balance the needs of the residents versus the, you know, economic vitality consideration. Um, and I'm, I'm generally inclined, if we could tighten up the conditions to move forward with a recommendation to town council, um, because I think that the town did pass an entertainment ordinance, and I, I have to take faith in the fact that the town council thought through where a lot of the places are that might have the entertainment, and, you know, the Toll House is one of them, and they did already, because of the way the ordinance is written, and anticipate that there's people that had CUPs prohibiting it that would be coming and asking for it. And, um, so it, it, I, I have to take faith in that. And then the, the second thing is the noise ordinance. I have to also take faith in the fact that the noise ordinance is set at a level that is going to not disturb the residents. And if that's not the case, then we need to revise the nor, noise ordinance versus turning down, um, requests of restaurants, that, that's their business to offer the entertainment. And those, relative to, um, moving forward with this, I think it's, would be absolutely essential to have some kind of, uh, monitoring history that could be accessed by the town, because it's like the fox guarding the hen house. If the applicant only is looking at this data, and we don't have an opportunity to look at it, then, um, I don't think it really holds true to what we're trying to do for the residents. So there would need to be access by the town available, and there would need to be, um, some monitoring history. Like I said earlier, I, I'm assuming there's a device that could port the data to something, you know, and, and it could be shared with people, and so that, you know, a few months down the road. And I, I do like the idea of, um, having like a six-month or 12-month checkpoint to see. And I had also thought about the weekdays. Um, I remember a couple of the, um, residents talked about, um, having small children, and at least for considering this as, as a trial period, more or less, since there's a checkpoint, maybe starting out small with just weekends, see how it goes, check the levels at the checkpoint, and then if everything seems okay, then certainly could be expanded. And then last, the existing conditional use permit, clearly there's a huge, um, disconnect in interpretation of what it means. And so, even though we're not really being asked to consider this, um, I consider this an opportunity for us to clarify this, because this is the document that's going to be going forward after we're all gone, unless it gets modified again. And so I, I think it's important to be very clear as to where and how much seating there can be, and the courtyard's not even mentioned in here, and I think it needs to be incorporated, because that's where this entertainment's going to be, and it needs, needs to be added in there in terms of, you know, where entertainment can, and can may not be allowed, and how many seats are allowed. But it does say, do entertainment or music in the courtyard? Oh, you're right. Well, we wouldn't be changing that, but we would also, we wanted to consider the seating as well, and how many seats there could be, so.
Understood. Commissioner Janoff?
So I'm new to this, and, uh, appreciate the opportunity to weigh in. If the Toll House had existed prior to the neighborhood, I think I would feel differently. But because the neighborhood was there first, and for a long, long time there first, um, and the commercial facility comes in, in such close proximity to the neighborhood, it concerns me that the noise ordinance is applied to, uh, would be applied the same as establishments that are not in such close proximity to a neighborhood. So I'm concerned about that. I'm also concerned about the notion that there could be seven-day-a-week, uh, entertainment noise. I'm also concerned, if we reduce that to just the weekends, how I would feel if I were in that neighborhood and had entertainment of varying kinds every weekend. Um, sound is sound, noise is noise, good noise is different from bad noise. I mean, people have all different kinds of standards with regard to what's pleasing or what's not. And I think this is a difficult situation because, uh, because of that. So I would, um, I would be not in favor of approving.
I do respect the town's new, um, entertainment policy. However, they did leave the CUPs open. It, it wasn't a given that it, they would have to come before us as a case-by-case basis. So that's what we're doing here, just as we recently did with the wine cellar, which we did not approve outdoor music and entertainment. Um, I'm also concerned that ownership and management changes, and then we're back to problems that could happen again with the neighborhood, and then enforcement issues. So those are concerns that I will share with the commission. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I think we probably are at a, at a point of needing a motion, because it looks like, to me, it's going to be pretty close. And we might as well find out which way close is. So I'm going to make an attempt at a motion, and see if I can get a second. But also, I want to say that the motion may not be complete, and I look for my fellow commissioners to help, help me with that, because there are a number of things that we would recommend. And, uh, this is very difficult for me to do, because I'm very empathetic with the neighbors, but I would like to think that the result of the motion I'm about to make would make the, make the situation more firm, uh, more enforceable, uh, and so I, that's why I'm going to make a motion, uh, to mo, to modify the conditional use permit. First, the motion would find that the proposed project is categorically exempt pursuant to section 15301 of the Environmental Equality Act. Uh, we would make the required findings as required by section 292190 of the town code for granting approval. When I say we would make, we would recommend that, I guess they would be made. We would recommend approval of the CUP application to the town council, with the conditions contained in exhibit 14, and the plans contained in exhibit six. And in addition to that, that, uh, the monitor required, uh, as proposed by the applicant, would keep a written record, uh, and that record would be accessible, uh, to the town upon request, uh, for a period of, and I'm just going to take a year, and say a year, uh, that the conditional use permit, uh, be made clear in paragraph, for example, two, where it says total seating shall not exceed 130. So that 130 applies to the restaurant and the, um, upper patio. Uh, that, uh, five was the outside seating use. The outdoor seating should not be used for banquet, uh, reception, or conference purposes. And my understanding is that applies to all outdoor matters, both the patio and the, uh, the courtyard. Um, in addition to that, that the entertainment be limited to Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Um, let's see if I'm forgetting something else here.
Commissioner Birch would like to, um, state something?
Yeah, so- Yeah, so just jumping in, because you asked for help. My understanding on number 5, outdoor seating use, that it's not used for banquet reception or conference rooms, was only for the upper patio. That the lower courtyard does not have that limitation, based on what staff told us earlier.
Well, I understand that, and so I asked this question. If we're going to have an effective sound ordinance, I would like the sound to apply to that area. So that's true. You wouldn't have to say, you couldn't, you could keep 5 in existence as to only the patio. But the sound we're talking about would apply to all outdoor?
Correct. Yes, absolutely.
Let me see. So we, oh, the other thing was, a suggestion was made that we have a trial period, which I think is a good suggestion. I would like the modification to have a period of one year, and I'm pulling that out of my hat, where it could be reviewed to make sure that what we're asking for is, in fact, complying, so that we wouldn't have to revoke this modification. We'd have to see whether it's being complied with. And if it's not being complied with, it would expire. The modification would expire. That's my recommendation. I don't want to make it taking away any kind of vested right. Okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, just one other thing. I think we ought to make clear what the patio is versus what the courtyard is. That doesn't jump out at you from, at least from this portion of the use permit. And you had a question?
I did. So as far as the one year, can we be very clear that it will come back to the planning commission? And what they will come back with is one year's worth of weekend sound data. And it's a pretty simple report. It just has dates, times, and then it gives you decibels at certain hour points or something. You can set that, that it's every hour between 1:00 and 10:00 or something. But that we would actually be given that full report for us to look through, because my interest is also in assessing the delta between summer and winter.
And with that, the staff report on the data given us, because I'm going to respect the town's view of looking at that. And I think it is critical that we clarify this, because I think one of the comments was made that, they talked to a couple of former council people. My experience is, you really don't go back, it's like the legislature. You don't go back to the legislature and say, "What did you mean?" In fact, my experience with law is, you can't do that, because we don't care what you meant, it's what you said. And then we've been interpreting this for a number of years. And whether the interpretation was initially right or wrong, I think it should now be respected. And as I say, I don't believe the testimony of two former council people, notwithstanding how good they are, would be admissible for any purpose to override what you folks have been doing. So that's the motion, except there's another suggestion.
I just had a question. When you were going over 2, 3, 5, and 6, I kind of got a little bit lost as to what your intent was. So in order to consider your motion, I wanted to make sure I understood. My idea of how it was going to be is that there would be a definition of total seating, outdoor seating, and then there would be a number attached to each of those, and that the courtyard either would be separate from the outdoor, you know, upper patio seating or included in that. But it needs to be specified. And that further, that number 5, if the courtyard was included in Condition 5 as written, then they couldn't obviously have entertainment, so.
So that's struck.
Okay, it's struck.
Yeah. If you get number 7, that's struck.
Well, it, number 5 says, "The outdoor seating shall not be used for banquet reception or conference purposes." If the courtyard definition is moved into under outdoor seating, then it's not going to be in compliance from the get-go. So maybe it's a separate one.
I do want to clarify that. And you're raising the point that it ought to be clarified.
Yes.
Let's see if we can clarify that.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
So the motion, my understanding is the outdoor seating restriction not exceeding 36. And notwithstanding the comments, which I don't doubt may be reasonable, but it's staff's opinion that that restriction of 36 applies to the patio, which is the upper piece.
Correct.
So whether or not that's feasible or not, one can't object if it's, you couldn't do it, because it would be less. So it should be clear that the outdoor seating in that Paragraph number 3 relates to the upper patio only. And then 5, which says outdoor seating use, the testimony, as I understood it, was that only applies to the patio, in staff's belief. So that would not apply to the courtyard. And that's what I, so that's what I think staff has interpreted that for some time.
Well, so then, there probably needs to be one more item in here that says the courtyard is, I mean, it's by not referring to it, it's probably permitted by omission, but to specifically say the courtyard has a capacity of this, and a seating capacity of this, and outdoor, you know, receptions, banquets are permitted.
Well, we have been told that we don't know, because we don't have the fire code with us. The town has no town limitation, but the town recognizes it is subject to the fire code.
Right. Well, since we're just making a recommendation to council, I think it certainly would be prudent to consider what number might be appropriate, whether it's the fire code or some number like that.
I think if you merely say, "In compliance with all applicable codes, including the fire code," you're covered, because that also may change from time to time. So I would agree with you, but I would suggest we do it that way.
Okay.
Now, is anything else we've forgotten? Because we're doing two things. One of the things we're trying to do is clean this thing up. And I say that only insofar as, if somebody's going to try to figure out the sound we're now talking about, it really helps if you know what the use permit means. So that's the motion, and I certainly look to staff to try to figure out what we've been saying, but I'm sure they will.
Yeah, and the council will get verbatim minutes, and so they'll have the benefit of reviewing all of this, and then they will take the.
We don't have a second yet.
Well, we might. Commissioner Birch?
I was going to second that.
Okay. Well, I just didn't want staff to, you know, assume a second had been made.
So we have a motion to recommend entertainment outdoors with the modified conditions of approval, that hopefully were clear to everybody. We have a second by Commissioner Birch. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Passes 3 to 2. Commissioner Janoff and Chair Badami opposed. Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights on the actions of the commission on this item, even though it was just a recommendation?
There are not appeal rights. This will be forwarded to the town council, and they will consider the planning commission's recommendation.
Thank you. I will look to the commissioner.
Can we take a five-minute break before we jump into the next one?
We will take a five-minute break and return. We are back, and we are back with two additional commissioners. Commissioner Hudes and Vice Chair Kane have joined the meeting. Vice Chair Kane?
Well, I apologize for being late, but as everybody out there probably knows, the streets are not moving southbound. I left my office at 5:00 to 6:00, and at 8:10, I was opposite the gym and accomplished the feat of getting here. It's just amazing. Commissioner Hudes was out there for three hours.
I will note that the rest of us got here on time, but we won't say anything about that.
I will note that as well. All right. Item number 4, 15680 Gumtree Lane, Architecture and Site Application S-16-044. Requesting approval to construct a new single-family residence on vacant property zoned HR 2 1/2. APN 527-09-006. May I have a show of hands from commissioners who have visited the site? Are there any disclosures from commissioners? Seeing none. Mr. Khan, I understand you're providing us with the staff report this evening.
Good evening, commissioners. Again, my name is Azar Khan, the Assistant Planner with the town. The item before you tonight is. The item before you tonight is an architecture and site application for the construction of a 5,653-square-foot home with a 745-square-foot attached garage on a vacant parcel. The home also has a 2,505-square-foot cellar. A previous application for a single-family home was approved by Planning Commission in 2013 but was not constructed. The town's consulting architect reviewed the plans and commented that the home is in similar size and height to the previously-approved application, and the home is well-designed. The application includes a request for a deviation from the hillside development standards and guidelines to allow fill greater than the three-foot, and is supported by staff because it will allow the former driveway and some of the property in the rear of the proposed home to be restored to a more natural topography. Staff recommends approval of the application based on its compliance with the hillside specific plan and the hillside development standards and guidelines with revised conditions as included in Exhibit 12. This concludes staff's presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have.
And I would just add, I know there was a question earlier about the desk item. So, given that this is a private road, these are standard conditions that typically get put on projects, that there is a pre- and post-construction survey, so that any damage they do during construction, they have to bring it back up to the previous level, so that they don't do damage and then leave that damage there. So that's why those conditions were added. They were unfortunately erroneously left out formerly, and so that's why those were added.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Commissioner Hudes?
Thank you. Question for staff. My understanding is that the residence is 5,998 square feet, and that there is a 5,000-square-foot standard there. Is that correct?
For the hillside designs, standards and guidelines is 5,000 square feet or more would require Planning Commission review. The discrepancy, I'm sorry, the 5,000 square feet that you see includes 345 square feet of the garage. So 400 square feet of the garage is exempt. So that's included in the total square footage, which totals out to 5,998 square feet.
And so there is not a, there's a 6,000-square-foot cap depending on lot size. So they are two square feet under that at 5,998 square feet from an FAR perspective, but the house itself is 5,653 square feet. Then you add the 345 square feet of the garage is where you get to the 5,998. The maximum square footage for a lot of this size is 6,000 square foot for the house and 400 square foot for a garage. So they do meet that requirement.
Okay, and it's, the 5,000 is just that it must come to Planning Commission.
Correct.
It's not an exception if it goes over 5,000.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Kane?
Nowwithstanding what happened in 2013, I'm looking at the application from a de novo point of view. If Town Council could comment, we're back at square one.
This is a de novo hearing. You're free to make any comments absent the previous decision that was made by the previous Planning Commission.
Can I conclude that 2013 is irrelevant?
You can make that conclusion if you think that's appropriate.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson, followed by Commissioner Birch?
You mentioned about the geotechnical report, and since this is a different application, there's two things that I thought were really relevant to geotechnical. One is that they're going to put this large cellar in there, and then the other one is this whole idea of the cut-and-fill. And so the timing of the geotechnical survey included all the new revisions to the application. Because in looking at the consulting architecture report, they kind of, he kind of went back and forth between when he visited before and now. So the geotechnical survey was done considering the current application and everything that's in it. Yes or no? That's all it was?
That's correct. So that it was looked at. The consulting architects going back and forth is that he had just reviewed one a couple of years ago, and so he was comparing the current proposal to that proposal and discussing its similarities. The applicant as well is here, and they will be able to provide additional comments on geotech or any other questions the commission may have.
Do you know if they have their geotechnical people here?
I do not know that you'd have to ask the applicant.
And then the second question I had was about the trees. The previous application, when it was approved, they didn't go through with it, but they went ahead and removed the trees. And there was 12 of them, I understand. And so my question is, if we end up going forward with this, I looked in the terms and conditions, and it talked about any trees that might be removed. And I didn't know if that, that they would have to do replacement trees. I did not know if that included them having to take care of the 12 that were already removed, because I think that's important.
Correct. So a tree removal permit was obtained for the removal of 12 trees. I was notified that 10 of those trees were removed, and it was mentioned in the, it was accommodated into the arborist's report as well. And so when moving forward during building permit stages, yeah, the applicant will be required to replace trees in relation to the town's ordinance.
So you're saying the terms and conditions do incorporate by reference to the arborist's recommendations?
Correct. As part of the conditions of approval, it does state that the trees shall be replaced in accordance to the town code.
Okay. Commissioner Birch?
I wanted to ask a little bit more clarification as far as the variance they are requesting on the cut-and-fill. In the, just to be clear on really why, because really out of this, this is the only variance they've asked for. In reading the geotechnical report, it does say that the total grading volume will be over 2,000 cubic yards of cut and 1,200 cubic yards of fill. I assume we're backfilling with soils that are, the cut is going to be the fill, and the rest is off-hauled. But did you find in reviewing it that there was no other way around this? This is really a necessary variance?
Yes, so they are requesting an exception, I'm sorry, a deviation to the standards in increasing the fill height above the maximum, which is allowed three feet. It is four to five feet in height, and as the applicant's project description states, some of the excavation from the cellar will be placed in where the fill restoration area is to be placed, and that is to replace the former driveway.
And so staff didn't do any other, looking at other options, this was also part of the previous approval as well, to restore this area. And so staff did not look at other options to doing this. Are there other options? There's always other options. So whether or not that could get to the three feet or not, that would be a question that you could ask the architect or applicant. They may be able to give you some input on that, may also require additional retaining walls.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Kane?
The staff report identifies Exhibit Nine as letter or letters of support. In all fairness, I don't see anything supportive about Exhibit Nine. Four people have their names typed out, that they saw the designs and reviewed the designs, but I don't, I don't see why we would necessarily identify this as a letter of support.
Apologize for the semantics. We'll work on that.
So I have a question for staff, and that is Exhibit Five, the project data. Under the maximum height, it says 30 feet maximum, which I believe in the hillside area, it's 25 feet. The proposed project has 23.1 feet in height, and I'd like to confirm if that is the height of the crow's nest and that the bulk of the home is 18 feet. If we have any concerns, if this is a visible home, if it has to be within the 18 feet and it's the crow's nest that's got the height that's exceeding the 18 feet, can you clarify that for us?
Sure. So the total height is 23 feet and 1 inches, and that is measured from proposed grade to the crow's nest, which is, which would be the height of the total building. The other areas of the home would be roughly 14 feet in height and 17 feet in height.
Thank you.
And just to clarify the 30 feet, the zoning code actually allows 30 feet. So the zoning code permits 30 feet in the hillside area. However, our hillside guidelines allow 25 feet. So technically, you could apply for a house that's 27 feet and not require a variance with capital V. It just is an exception to the guideline. So the code actually allows 30 feet. Obviously, we look to, we don't see people ask very often for an exception to the height because that is a major exception, but technically, the zoning code maximum height for the HR zone is 30 feet.
All right, but when I look at the hillside design standards, I see it as a standard and not necessarily a guideline. So when I read the standards, it says shall.
It does say shall, but there's also an allowance for an exception to the height. So if the zoning code said 25 feet, the guideline said shall was 25 feet, then they'd actually have to apply for a variance. The odds on making the findings for a variance, which are very specific for something relating to height, probably would be very challenging.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Any further questions? Seeing none. I will now call the applicant and his team to the podium, and you have 10 minutes to address the commission. Mr. Kohlstad?
Could we turn this on? Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for making the long trek. I know the traffic was brutal. I want to thank the staff, especially Azar Khan, for working so diligently with us to make sure that we were on our toes. We had several back-and-forth exchanges on specific things. I want, before I start my formal presentation, I want to make a couple clarifications or nitpicks or whatever. In the staff report under the geotechnical review, the geologist states that we have a total grading of 2,145 cubic yards. Our understanding of the rule is that excavation is not grading. So I'm going to define excavation as cutting for a basement, okay? And for a swimming pool. That is covered under the building permits, not under a grading permit. So we have 1,280 cubic yards of grading. So that's about half of what the number that you're seeing. So I just want to make that point on the record. I also want to apologize for something that one of the concerned citizen had pointed out in my staff and in my letter of justification, that I said, I'd stated in June that we were not going to remove any trees that weren't already applied for and permitted from the previous application. Well, in several iterations following, we ended up asking to remove six more, six trees. And those are trees number five through 10, and they're down by the driveway, the old road, the old road. And part of it is because of all the grading that we had to do to make that happen. The trees were not going to survive. So let me just start with, I know that you guys are all aware that there was a home approved in 2013. It was a very traditional Spanish-style home, 25-foot or 24-feet was the height limit that it had. It had a big circular driveway. It had really more of a large impact on the property than our property. I've got an exhibit here on the screen that, it's a little bit messy, but you can, one, two things I want to point out right away, and then I'll get back on to our home. The previous application had this big, large circular driveway, which was built over the cliff with seven-foot-high retaining walls. The other thing was the swimming pool was built out here, and a big lawn area was put out in there. And you can see the width of the house was quite a bit wider in girth than our home. Our home is the dark outline. So we've taken a different approach to this design, starting with the architecture. It's more contemporary, more modern with flat roofs for the most part to lower the mass, lower the height, and still get our volume of 10 feet, 11, 12 feet. We do have, the majority of the home was at 18 feet. It does step down. And I say the majority, that's the center portion, the living areas from the family room to the living room. Really, this, we wanted to capture views in 360 degrees, looking north, south, east, and west. It's quite a fantastic site. It's probably one of the best sites I've ever worked on in my career. So I feel very fortunate to be designing on this property. I mentioned that our driveway sticks to the flat area. The whole house, we've actually shifted over into the more flat portion of the property instead of building on the edges. That's all part of the guidelines as well. We, all the grading complies with the hillside standards. And we talked just a little bit about that old road that we want to restore into original terrain. When it was subdivided, before it was subdivided, that was the driveway up to the angel house at the top of the hill. And when it was subdivided, the previous applicants worked with staff, and they said, we need to get rid of this road. And so that was part of the understanding, that that road would get basically just returned to normal, because there's a whole new driveway built up to both of our homes. So that's required the exemption, or the, I don't know the technical language, but extra grading that we needed in the form of a height of fill over the three feet. Both the homes are in similar size, and they're both compatible with all the neighbors. And since then, since the 2013 home was built, Highlands had built lots 18 and 19. And in the staff report, it says that there are about 6,400, 6,500 square feet total. They're advertising those as 77, 73 to 7,700 square feet. I just want to, I don't have any data on that except for what they're putting in their ads, and typically, they underestimate that. My client, Steve Massey, has met with all the neighbors. He talked specifically with all of them. He didn't take fantastic notes, but he has met with all of them, and I would assume that any of them had complaints, they would have written a letter or showed up tonight. There is this, the letter about the visibility. I want to apologize, number one, for an act of God. We had a pretty heavy-duty storm this weekend, and it blew off, blew down the majority of the story poles. Hopefully, you guys got up there before the storms hit this weekend. If you waited till today, you got to see a house of cards. But when we put the story poles up, we went down to the only viewing platform that we could find that was anywhere close to being visible. We could see portions of the Hollywood Video dome from angles on the property, and that's usually the first cue. If I can see that dome, then, okay, we got to work at it. You could barely see it. So we went down to the viewing platform, down. We checked all four of the parking lots, the Starbucks parking lot, the, you know, the new one that, where the pizza, Phil's Coffee is, went to all four parking lots. So pretty good area, not just standing at the stoplight. And we couldn't see anything. That's with our naked eye. We could not see anything. Now, I don't know if the storm blew down more trees or whatever, but we went out there today and used binoculars, and we could see the upper portion of the house. So that upper portion is what we're calling the crow's nest. It's, we have a roof deck, and so we have to have a staircase that goes up to that roof deck, and we decided to just put a little loft space up there as well, so you, when you can be inside viewing this San Francisco, downtown San Jose, or you can go outside on the deck and enjoy it outdoors. It's quite a cool feature of the house. And it's, this overall width is 20 feet wide that goes up to 23 feet tall. The house is almost 140 feet wide. So we're less than 10% of the facade facing the valley that's visible, potentially visible with binoculars. And as my understanding is, if the house is more than 25% visible, then you're limited to 18 feet in height by the design standards. And we are well under that 25% of visibility. So we feel that you can approve this thing without any concern of additional visibility. I just wanted to finish up saying that we did several iterations, staff, including I just wanted to finish up saying that we did several iterations. Staff, including engineering, was, had the fine-tooth comb on it, and there's not a retaining wall higher than three feet. There's not a cut deeper than four feet. This house meets all the standards, all the guidelines. We're replanting more than we're required to replant. We've, we've looked at, we've looked at the old house, and I want to point that out, that you can, just as a comparison sake, I mean, we have something to go by, right? This was approved just three years ago, very current planning commission. You can see the outline that's dashed of the old house, the approved house and our house. It's this amazing amount of difference in overall height that's, that we've cut out. And one last picture. I took that today because we got this notification yesterday about a concern of visibility. The circle there is a general vicinity of where the house is. I contend that these two houses take your eye, they stick out, they're amazingly visible. Everything else blends in. You have to zoom in, again, with a binocular to see the crow's nest portion of this house.
Thank you, Mr. Kohlstad. Commissioner Hudes?
Thank you. With regard to the grading exception, I'm sorry, the height exception, the fill height exception, I should say, what would happen to this, what would the impact be on this project if you did not have that three-foot exception on fill height?
You mean to fill in the driveway? The old drive, the old road?
My understanding is that there's an exception for fill height of three feet. Is that correct?
So, I'll try to clarify. So, you're exceeding the maximum fill height of three feet, and so, I believe what Commissioner Hudes is asking is, if you did not exceed that number, what impacts or differences would that have?
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, one, for one, we couldn't effectively restore the land and take away that cut driveway. It's got paving on it. You can't just leave that paving there. I mean, it's going to wash out. So, it mostly affects our landscape area and where we're putting all of our drainage. We're actually putting our retention ponds down there as well. So, it pretty much affects that. It affects our patios and our outdoor entertainment areas. It doesn't affect the house.
If I could follow up?
Commissioner Hudes?
So, how does additional height result in not being able to cover a driveway?
The driveway is, if you, if you look at a cross-section of the existing cut, it's greater than four feet. So, we, if we have to fill it up, oh, there we go. We have our civil engineers here. Amanda, would you like, could Amanda step forward and answer this question? She's the expert on this. Is that all right?
Yeah, I'll need a card if she's going to speak. If she could state her name for the record.
My name is Amanda Musi Verdel. I'm with Hannah and Bernetti, civil engineers. So, on sheet five of my plans, it has several cross-sections through the area that you're talking about, the restoration. It's probably easier to see on your plans, but this line here, so this is the existing grade as it exists today. What we would like to do is restore it. The restoration, what it originally looked like is this dash line is about the approximate grade of what it looked like before they cut in the driveway, the existing driveway. And the line on the top is what we like to restore it to. So, you could see there's just a little bit more grading that we're asking for in this section, this section, this one, we're not asking for anything more. And these sections, we're just, it just helps even out the turf area because, because of the slope caused by the cuts. Does this seem driveway?
Thank you. Yes, that helps because just reading sheet five, I wasn't able to come to that conclusion. Thank you for the explanation.
Commissioner Birch?
I have another question for you. Okay, so, that helps, actually. That makes it much clearer. So, essentially, yeah, you're asking for more, but it's restoring the landscape to its original topography.
Correct.
Okay. Can you explain something on your drawings that I've been wondering about?
Sure.
On sheet two, you have a hashed area that says illegal fill area. What is that? You had to know that that was going to come up the moment you put it on the plans.
There is, it's clearly evident that there has been some dumping on this property. And, yes, and quite a bit.
Okay.
And there's just been a lot of activity in the area, and this lot was used as a dumping ground. And so, this is fill. It's just on top. It's not compact, it's not native, nothing. So, our intention is to cut all that off.
Okay. And offhaul it far away?
Or use it if we can. It's really not very good stuff. There's debris in there and garbage and rubble and, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson?
I had another question about the fill. I'm pretty sure that I had my right orientation, but you know, when you look at the drawings and you go to the property, sometimes it doesn't always look like this, and especially up there where it's private roads and it, so, the place that you're proposing to fill is basically what I would call the lower driveway. As you're driving up Gumtree Lane, it was on the right-hand side, and then the house would be up from that. And there was a pretty big drop-off, if I recall, which makes sense for why you wanted to fill it. But I wondered, so that's, that is the location where the fill would be, right?
Yes.
Now, the cellar looked like it was going to be on the other side of the house from that cut and fill area. So, it, okay, so, so that would explain why you didn't say that your cellar might be impacted. Because I wondered if the, if you didn't go with the fill and the cellar was, you know, at that area of the house, then it would be exposed. Right. And then you'd have a, you know, maybe a floor area issue or sizing issue. But the cellar's on the other side of the house from that area.
Correct.
Maybe it's underneath, but.
Are you talking about geotechnical issues? Are you talking about?
I'm talking about.
Yeah. We're going to be cutting into native soil if that's.
Right. Well, and then I wondered, at what point was it not like that? I mean, because that driveway didn't get built in 2013 when the original, so, at some point in time, somebody put that driveway in and cut the hill, and we, I mean, maybe staff knows, I mean, but, but.
So, maybe I can answer both your questions. One of them was, is the basement itself is a true cellar. It doesn't have any daylighting. It's not exposed. It's not, it's not sticking out down the hill. The old road was what, it used to be a very large property. And I think in 2012, 2011, it was subdivided. The Hamiltons owned it, and they subdivided this other half. Sandy Harris and David Fox did the subdivision. And part of the, part of the, part of that subdivision, and Joel can maybe attest to this, is that they designed a new road, which is our new access driveway. And that was, that was put in between owners, I think, the Lantries, when they owned it, after Sandy Harris owned it, Bill Lantry owned it for about a year and was going to develop on this and built the road in conjunction with Highlands for those two homes. And then we discontinued that road up and on. And so, that's why we entered the property at the very top instead of down halfway. And so, that way, the road really, when I talked to, here we go again, talking to someone in the past, when I talked to Suzanne Avila about this, who's very familiar with this whole project, she thought, she could have sworn this was a condition of approval of the subdivision. So, I, we went back and we read all the reports and everything. We couldn't find that, unfortunately. But they, she swore up and down that that was talked about in the planning commission, that this was, it was part of the subdivision, that you had, that was actually a condition to, to remove that driveway, the road, and restore it because they were planning a whole new driveway. And you don't want two roads on the property.
Right. Well, and I suppose, I imagine if you had used that lower driveway, you would have had a, maybe a slope issue or something. But that helps to understand the history, though, because all this references to, you know, this is always the way it was intended, and then you don't know where you could find that. So, it was, it was part of the history, not written down, but, you know, it also makes sense from a landscaping and hillside protection perspective.
We think it does, yes.
Vice Chair Kane?
I had a similar reaction to the illegal dumping. I didn't know exactly what you were doing, but you didn't do it. Is it your intention to clean that out, restore it?
That gets offhauled. It's just, it's crud. It's just no good.
So, you're going to?
We have to take it all off. It's several hundred yards.
Well, that's great. Thank you. Ms. Villa?
She was a former planner who's no longer with us.
No. I'm asking the civil engineer's name. I didn't get it.
It's Musi Verdel, but you could call me Amanda.
Amanda. Let's go to sheet five, where you were before. And for, for common frame of reference, I've just numbered them 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, as in columns. So, on diagram number one, and that, this question goes to 3, 4, and 5 as well, you show the dotted line of existing ground, and I'm assuming that that means what it might have looked like before the cut. On 1, 4, 5, and 6, what you're proposing exceeds the original slope of the ground. And the word turf is used on 4, 5, and 6. What does that mean? You're creating a standing place or?
So, the final grade will have turf on it. So, it's just.
Does that mean grass?
Grass, yeah.
So, you're raising?
Well, it's, sorry, it's artificial turf.
It probably looked like grass to me, so that's okay. You're raising the slope to put in grass or artificial grass?
Correct.
Is that why you need the retaining walls on 4, 5, and 6? Because I don't, I don't know why you'd need a retaining wall there if you restored it to its existing grade.
So, we're asking to restore it, and then on, well, so, 5, 6, yeah, 4, 5, and 6, we're asking for the three-foot of fill that we would have gotten if that road wasn't cut in.
I wish I was following you because now I'm not going to sound too bright. But it shows the existing dotted line, and you're adding more dirt on that and putting in a retaining wall.
Correct.
I'm not sure why.
We're adding three feet of fill in that area.
Because?
Because we want to have a lawn, a flat area for a turf.
So, we're putting in retaining walls for civilian purposes, so that you can make it look like a grassy knoll, so to speak?
It's not supporting a structure, if that's what you're asking. The retaining.
I just don't know why you're going above the dotted line and putting in a retaining wall that otherwise might not be necessary to preserve the original slope.
To get more usable space for the house.
Okay. To figure number two, the house and the patio, are they extended outward from the slope, from the natural slope? In the top corner where it says house, and there's a little stickout called patio, and the house then continues back to the slope, are those being extended out over the slope? That's what figure two seems to suggest.
It's this patio right here. Yes, but it, yeah, that patio.
Thank you.
Any further questions for the applicant? Commissioner Birch?
Just a follow-up from Commissioner Kane. So, my understanding, that question that he just asked, if we went on sheet A8 on the left elevation, the little patio there to the, to the left, that is the little piece that sort of juts out. It's kind of covered. Is that?
Okay, I'm going to sheet eight.
A8.
A8.
Yeah.
Left elevation.
Yeah. So, it appears that there's, you know, a little patio or something if I look on the left-hand side of that elevation?
Yes.
That was my understanding when I was, I actually looked at the same thing earlier today that Commissioner Kane is referencing. That's the little piece that kind of jets out. It's just a little covered patio or something, right?
It's less than three feet off the ground.
Yeah.
But the one that Commissioner Kane had pointed out is the one on the other side of the house, as Amanda points out.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions for the applicant? See none. Thank you, Mr. Kohlstad.
Lee Quintana, Five Palm Avenue. And I apologize for getting my letter in late. It's been an unusual week, to say the least. I would like to comment on primarily, I've listed several things in my letter, but primarily, I'm going to comment on the grading and the fill restoration, the landscaping, and the trees. What I have put up on the screen is, this is the house, the footprint of the house and the garage. This is the driveway. This outer line here is all the landscaping, and this is the patio and this, excuse me, this is the turf, this is patio and swimming pool. So, you see that there's a lot of land that is taken up besides the house. There was a comment in, and what I'm trying to show you is that as far as the grading goes, it would appear that if you were following the natural contours of the land, you would be having something similar to this. You wouldn't be having squared-off ends, and you would be having your landscaping and your patio and your turf closer to the house. I think the Hillside Guideline says the turf should be within 30 feet of the house, and all the landscaping within that should be, the majority of it should be native planting. I don't believe that's the case here. In addition, so my question was, and I think it was answered, that if, first of all, if the turf was closer to the house, if there was less patio, and I would love to know the figure of all that together, because I think it's probably bigger than the house itself, even if you exclude the driveway. I'm going to skip because I'm running out of time already to the question of trees. Well, I'm going to back on the question of grading. The original project did not have a cellar. They say in this project that the cellar fill is being used for the restoration area, so they don't have to take as much offhaul. There was a lot less offhaul before there was a cellar. So, the question is, should the cellar be smaller so you don't have to have as much offhaul? Should the area of the landscaping be smaller to be more consistent with the goals and objectives of this, of, shoot.
Thank you, Ms. Quintana. Any questions for Ms. Quintana? See none. Thank you very Our next speaker is Marita Quint. Our next speaker is Marita Quint.
Lee, we're going to need the microphone back.
I don't want to give it back.
I think you want to keep speaking.
That's one way to defeat the proposal.
Well, I could have kept talking as I was giving it back, but I didn't. I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Marita Quint. I live at 15775 Gumtree Lane, which is at the very end of Gumtree Lane. In 1975, my family was a grantor of easement for the Angel property. And it's the parcel of land that Davidon has built on, and this property will be built on. And around 2004, 2005, the neighbors got together and completely repaved the road, at their expense. So many of you visited the site and you saw the bad condition of the road. And we contend that that is leftover from Davidon, which leaves a very low bar for them to fulfill in terms of accepting what, what the current condition of the road is, if that makes any sense. And we question whether the roads have been accepted by Public Works post-construction of the Davidon construction, because we've seen no move from Davidon to make any improvements to the road post-construction. So that is a really huge, an impactful thing for us to discuss, because the road is not safe. There's potholes where, where machinery has passed through. A culvert has been replaced with failing equipment. The grate has been soldered on to the top of the culvert, so we can't remove it and dig out that section that's completely pooled. And this was all post-constru-, this is all from the Davidon project. So I'm sure they would like to have a very nice road to use for their home. We would like to have a nice road to use for our homes at the top of the hill. But we've been left with this mess from the Davidon construction. We made several complaints during the time that Davidon was constructing. I voiced my concerns to the compliance officer. He came up and looked at the potholes. He looked at the culvert site. He looked at the portions of the road that had been trenched for San Jose water. He also agreed that it had been damaged. But we've still seen no move for any repaving or improvements to the road post-construction from Davidon. So do you happen to know if the roads have been accepted by Public Works post-construction?
Any questions for Ms. Quint? Vice Chair Kane?
The road, the driveway that you're referring to, is the one that they are proposing to tear up and restore?
No, this is the road leading up to the development where Davidon... This is the Gumtree Lane private road that leads up to the development, that all of us use for access to our homes.
I'm sorry, I missed your point, because I thought you were talking about the one that they want to fill in and fix.
No, 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 no. This is the portion of the road that all of the neighbors use for access to get to the different homes that are up there.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'm just going to ask the town attorney. My understanding is that it has never been accepted by the town, is that correct?
That's correct. And I would just offer, yeah, as well. So there's a condition in the plan development back from 2000, I don't know, five, that required bonds to be put up. And prior to occupancy of all the units, there actually still is a Davison home that has not been finaled off Gumtree, which goes to this. And then there's a, you know, there's a number of them that are accessed off Shady Lane. And that condition applies to Shady Lane, Drysdale, Gumtree, all the way down. And so those things will be done, and the bonds will not be released until those are accepted, should they be accepted by the town. And so that will be done. The bar will be, then be, depending on the timing of construction, if this project gets approved, they may either, you know, have additional impact before Davison's done, or they may impact it after, or they may be completely done before Davison's anywhere near done with all of their lots. They still have five lots that have no entitlements currently.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
This is really kind of unrelated, but I would just say that those of us, I guess all of us, who drove up and looked at the lot, had to ford a stream across there, which is clearly not safe.
I would, I would assume that's where the grate is that you're speaking of. I'm not sure.
That's where the culvert was replaced, and yes.
So we, and we can work with Parks and Public Works staff, talk to them, find out what's going on there. And we also will be having conversations with Davison on a number of issues before the month's out. And so this is another item that we can add to that list.
Thank you, that's very reassuring.
Any further questions? See none, thank you. All right, the applicant is invited back for five minutes to add any further comments regarding the application. Oh, I'm sorry. Dr. Weisman, did you say you completed a card for us?
I just wanted to bring it up.
We'll find it somewhere, it's not here. It's hiding.
We'll take your word.
Dave Weisman, Francis Oaks. I'm not here to comment on the proposed house, but to express my disappointment in the whole A&amp;S process as outlined in my letter to you submitted two days ago. That's desk item 13. It has now been 11 months since the town council sent the revised visibility methodology for hillside homes back to staff. 11 months with no action after three planning commission meetings, totally eight hours, in which, and one meeting which was dedicated exclusively to this issue. It was on the town council agenda twice. Yes, I appreciate that the north 40 is the 800-pound gorilla in the room, but this excuse is wearing thin. I haven't seen any developments being delayed for 11 months while staff was involved in the, in the north 40. And this excuse also doesn't work out, because Lee Quintana and I submitted a possible draft methodology over one year ago. Consequently, the amount of staff time required will be minimal. Last month, before this body, several community members expressed their concerns about visibility issues relating to the Shannon Road, Sahadi rezoning and subdivision proposal. Tonight, we have another hillside proposal with visibility issues. I feel that I must challenge this A&amp;S on the same grounds as I challenged the Shannon Road and prior Highland projects. Least I face criticism that I am being biased against any one developer. But do staff really expect the public and applicants to have to repeat this back-and-forth appeals process that took place in 2015 for the three Highlands lots? Every time a hillside project comes before you, staff creates more work for everyone. Every day, we don't have the new visibility methodology. As our planning commission, I encourage you tonight to clearly state that you will not consider another hillside A&amp;S application until the hillside visibility methodology is finalized. Otherwise, what is the point? Your efforts may be a total waste of time. I am offended by the amount of time that staff has wasted, about amount of your time that staff has wasted. Tell staff to take the two-page draft Lee and Quintana and I proposed and work with us to update that draft to incorporate the discussions and decisions from all of the five prior planning commission and town council hearings. That same process worked well when the town revised the tree protection ordinance in 1915, in 2015. And we should use that model now. What are we afraid of? Success?
Questions? Commissioner Hudes?
Thank you. With regard to this specific project, are there visibility issues that you believe exist with this proposal?
I'm not sure, but I'll give you a couple of examples. Tonight, we're told that six trees are going to be removed. The consulting arborist had three trees. The town, the staff report mentioned four trees, without specifying which ones. The architect's letter said that no trees would be removed. The planning commission and the town council, while not finalizing their document, did come to agreement on certain issues. And those were that trees that were to be removed would not be counted as screening. That has not been done. In fact, the trees that are going to be removed seem to be a moving target. Second of all, trees in poor and poor fair condition were not supposed to be counted as screening. That hasn't been done. The viewing platforms very clearly are, there are four specific viewing platforms listed in the hillside standards. And then there's the fifth one. And that specifically says, you know, platforms as decided by the deciding body. The architect himself has stated that this property has incredible views. Well, if it does, then those, the, the views that you're seeing in the valley, those people can also see back up to this hillside. You just don't stand at the corner of Blossom Hill and Los Gatos Boulevard. That's one of the possibilities. But the whole valley was open. That was the nice thing that the Sahadi, Sahadi did. Last month, he presented viewing platforms from everywhere in the valley. One of the reasons we passed the hillside standards was because we were upset about houses being built in the county that were visible to the people in Los Gatos. We wanted to prevent that. If we now only worry about houses in the hillsides being visible to our town and not worrying about our neighbors, I think that's pretty elitist.
Thank you.
I have, I have a question, but I want to ask a question of staff first. So, Mr. Paulson, if you could just confirm for me that if a home is visible, that it's limited to 18 feet in height?
Only if more than 25% of it is visible. What do we limit to, 18 feet in height?
So this, okay.
Go ahead.
So this particular home, for the most part, is 18 feet in height. So regardless if it's a visible home or not. And then secondly, the only question would be the facade of the Crows' Nest, which is 138 square feet, where the facade might be, what, 11 feet across? It still would put it under the 25% visibility.
Significantly under, yes.
Thank you. Do you have any comments to that, Dr. Weisman?
Well, we, we talked about that during the hearings. In other words, you could propose a house that's 5,000 square feet, which has a 25, which has a 20% visibility, which means that 1,000 square feet of that house, the facade of that, would be visible to the valley. On the other hand, if I built a house which was 500 square feet total, and all of that 500 square feet was visible, it would be a smaller house, it would be less impact on the land. But the way the code is presently written, that house would not be allowed, because more than 25% of it is visible. And one of the things that we brought up is that makes no sense. And we didn't finish that, this was returned to staff in February of last year, 11 months ago. And there's been nothing done about it since then. And now here we are unfairly, I think, to applicants that are coming forward, and staff is not telling them, "Go back and listen to the planning commission hearings, the town council hearings, and take those decisions into account." You approve this tonight, I will tell you now, I will appeal it to the town council. Not because I'm against the proj-, I, I have nothing to say about the house. It's because I need to force, we need to force this issue to be decided. We need to fix this methodology. We've had all those hearings in 2015 and 2016, and we've got nothing for it.
Vice Chair Kane?
I agree with you on the macro issue of resolving what the policy shall be, but, you know, what I have in front of me right now is a specific application. And are you saying, in response to the other commissioner, that you're not aware there's a visibility issue here?
I'm sorry, that I'm...
That you are not aware that there is a visibility issue here?
I don't know, because the analysis hasn't been done. We haven't seen the project with, the applicant has taken one picture, he's shown us one picture from the corner of Los Gatos Boulevard and Blossom Hill. It has very little visibility from there. But you and the town council all decided that we're not limited to just those four specific viewing platforms. We need to move around the town and see where the best visibilities are. Davidon did that for the Highlands. The Sahadi did that for his, for his project, his proposal, and back in December. We've got six trees that are, that we're now saying are going to be removed. Who knows?
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Well, if I understand you correctly, the best thing we can do for you is to approve this project, so you can appeal it. That's kind of what you're saying.
No, I'd like you not to, well, that's what, you could do that. You could do that. And, and then we'll go through another nine, nine months of...
But since we don't write the rules, there's not a heck of a lot we can do for you. The only entity that can is the council. So if we, for example, were to deny this, and they were to appeal it, same result. If, on the other hand, we think, because we don't have any evidence of visibility, and that may itself be because of this limitation, I'm not really quarreling with you, but I'm just trying to think...
No, no, I, I, your point's well taken.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
I'm not going to get mad at you if you approve it. I'm just telling you what I'm going to do. I have to. We've got to force the issue.
Further questions? See none, thank you, Dr. Weisman. The applicant, Mr. Kolsat, is invited back to the podium for five minutes to address the commission regarding any further concerns with this application that may have been brought up.
Thank you. You may start the clock. Yeah, I, I really don't want to be the poster child for this new visibility standard thing that had been talked about. There's several things that get talked about in town every day, from cellars to trees, to heights, to color, to everything. And we, it's a moving target. We are only going by what we have at, at our, at our hands, is, is the ordinance and the hillside standards and design guidelines. So that's what we're basing our design on. And again, I just want to make it clear that this house is not over 18 feet, except for that one section that is less than 10% of the facade. So we comply with the guidelines. And I know you know that. I wanted to just talk a little bit more about the landscaping. We wanted to put a full, complete plan in place for this application. We didn't want to just put the house in here and let, let a buyer, or whoever moves into this house, as Steve moves into this house, now have to come back and apply for landscaping. But let's assume that we didn't. Let's, let's assume that we just didn't have any landscaping at all, just minimal patios, and that's it, and left it to the, the future owner of this. The assumption would be that they're going to base their fills on the restored hillside. So that old road that we, we are restoring back to native, or natural gray, let me call it natural gray, is what we're now using as our benchmark to measure our three feet of maximum fill. I just want to make that, clarify that, if I will, if I may. That landscaping happens to be farther out than 30 feet from the house. Our landscape architect, David Fox, works on several of the Highlands projects after the fact of the initial approvals. And the, the main complaint that he gets time and time again is that there's no outside areas, there's no landscape areas for the kids to play. There's no place to, you know, run around. So he saw this as a great opportunity to really separate this house from all those other homes and provide a real suitable landscape area for the play. And so that's why we pushed it out a little bit. All that terrace and paving is, is permeable pavers. And, and I want to make, make a point, because I know that we went over this quite a bit with staff. If, there's no rule that says you can't have landscaping beyond 30 feet of your house. The rule is, if it's beyond 30 feet, it can't be native, it can't be grass. It has to be artificial turf or other types of plant. You can't have grass beyond 30 feet of your house. So that's why we switched from grass to artificial turf. That was one of the iterations we had to make. But I think that what you're seeing is an overall project that, that is well thought out. It complies with all the, the standards, visibility, the materials, the architecture is, is been well received by the, the town's architect staff. And our neighbors are in support. We all want to, we also are in support of having, forcing Davidon to fix the road before we wreck it, before we do our damage, so we can, we have a level playing field. So we encourage the town to pursue those endeavors. Thank you.
Vice Chair Kane.
Mr. Colstad is probably in front of my nose, but I didn't see a discussion or debate about LRDA. Is that because the Noel is LRDA?
Correct.
Staff agree with that?
So LRDA is on sheet two. You can see where that is.
So the project is compatible with the LRDA?
Yes, the house and the pool is within the LRDA.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hudes.
I had two questions about the landscaping and the hardscape. First of all, the patio, do you have any reaction to the suggestion of Ms. Quintana to have a curved patio rather than the patio squared off curved and pulled in closer to the structure?
So this house is very geometric. It's, it's, it's got 45-degree angles. Yes, the property does, it is soft and it's rounded. If you saw our original landscape plan, we had curved retaining walls. Number one, they cost quite a bit more money to build. But number two, they exceeded the length allowed by the hillside standards and guidelines. They went more than 50 feet without a breakup. And so we looked and looked and looked and we were doing these funky offsets and it would, nothing made sense. We were just, only thing we were doing is trying to, to do a technicality to, to keep from being 50 feet long without some kind of a break. So to have a long graceful curve was actually our preferred design, but it goes against the standards. So that's why we came up with this design, which actually works more, it's more of an architectural look. It works with the house more than it does with the land.
Commissioner Hudes, did you have another question?
Another question. And I saw the diagram indicating hardscape. It looks like a lot of hardscape, but I, it also is a very large lot. Maybe I have missed it, but is, do you know roughly what percentage of the lot is, is hardscape?
I could look that up if you, if you give me a minute.
I don't need it this instant, but maybe before we finish, I don't want to hold things up.
Vice Chair Kane.
While he's doing that, let me return to the LRDA question. I was trying to make a positive point, and you referred me to sheet number two. Well, Mr. Con, I'm apologizing in advance, but I don't see an LRDA discussion or notation on here. What am I missing?
If you look at the legend, the last item is 30% slope line. If you follow that line across, that would be, that would determine the LRDA. The LRDA is-
If only I knew the code.
It's not, it's not graphically illustrated in some different color, so it can be difficult. So it's the symbology of that 30% slope line on the right-hand side of, you see where the legend is? So you'll see there's a number of areas in there that delineate those lines that are over 30% slope.
The curve on the right side coming across to the dotted lines on the left side, what's in the middle of that is the LRDA?
Yes, correct.
So that's what I said earlier.
Yes, generally, you were accurate.
Sorry.
You were correct.
The LRDA is normally an important issue, and in this one it seems to be moot. And that's because the whole thing is an LRDA.
Well, the LRDA is always an important issue. This one, it in fact is not entirely LRDA, but where the house is proposed, it is within the LRDA.
Thank you.
I have an answer for Commissioner Hudes. We, the house is 7% of the property and the landscaping, the impervious is 10%.
Thank you.
Commissioner Birch. I have a couple of questions moving from those to more of architecture and a couple of questions about the house itself. You didn't bring us a materials board.
We did.
There's one? Where?
I'm sorry, I have it in my cubicle. I can go get it right now.
All that time we spent on-
Well, I just wanted to-
Well, that's not a good place for it.
To make sure, because it's, it's been a topic that's come up before, that the, the standing seam roof obviously is extremely low reflectivity. Yes, right?
This darker color is very low reflect- We're also on a very low slope, and so it's not, it's not very, it's not, it's probably at the slope of the viewing from Netflix or something like that.
Okay. I have one other question concerning the lighting in the Crows' Nest and the patio. In the conditions of approval, there is an item that addresses outdoor lighting. Would you be opposed if I tightened that up a little bit more and said that the lighting on the patio and the Crows' Nest needs to be on some type of timer that sweeps at, you know, 10 o'clock or something? So if somebody falls asleep downstairs, there's not this like beacon of light shining up there? If that's the only visible part of the house?
Well, exterior lighting is governed by the building code that, that makes, you have to have some kind of a timer or a photovoltaic sensor or something like that.
But when you get on a patio that kind of gets enclosed in the Crows' Nest, you get in that fuzzy gray area, does it fall under that or not? So would you be opposed to me just tightening it up and saying that includes the Crows' Nest? That'll be on the-
So just so you know, the outdoor patio is not going to have any hot lights that are above the railing height. There'll all be wall lights inside.
No, understood, but by, but why, we talked about with the visibility, when you were showing us earlier, that is the only thing that would be visible from down here. So if, for whatever reason, all those lights were left on-
Are you talking about exterior lighting?
I'm saying I also want the interior lighting of the Crows' Nest to also be on a timer. So if there's lights in there-
That might be a little bit difficult because that's part of the stairwell and the entry and all that. It's all one open space.
Not if you have lights actually installed in the Crows' Nest. If you have a light fixture on the ceiling or the wall of that Crows' Nest,
Yes.
that is the specific fixtures I would want swept off.
Interesting.
We had another house recently that had a tower, and we had the same discussion because it actually was visible from down right where you're talking about. And it was one of those things where we all kind of went, dang it. You could see that thing when it's on at night. So it would be specific to just the Crows' Nest, not the whole foyer, because I understand it's an open area. But would you be opposed to me putting something in there? Thank you.
Says it's fine.
Okay.
The Crows' Nest.
Vice Chair Kane.
Sorry.
You got it. Vice Chair Kane.
The Crows' Nest, I read, we're calling it a Crows' Nest, but I read somewhere that it had function. It was a study or a bedroom.
It's a loft.
Does it have function? I mean, if somebody's in there, lights go off at 10 o'clock, they have to leave? Is it a study? Is it, is it a functional room for the house?
Yes, yeah, it could be, it could be a homework place. It could be an office. It could be an art studio.
Well, the 10 o'clock thing, Commissioner Birch, is going to be inconvenient.
Well, no, so I think we all know how lighting control works. You can have something that sweeps off and then you hit a button and overwrite it. So- I'm just saying if, if nobody's been up there, somebody falls asleep downstairs, the building automatically turns the lights off. So at 1 o'clock in the morning, there's not a light shining.
I'm doing my homework until 2:00 AM, and it's okay to have the beacon? I thought you were making a point about the beacon.
No, 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 I was just making a point about it being left on for four days in a row while people are on vacation all night long. That's all.
Would you be okay if we specified that it was occupancy sensors?
Yes, there you go. That's perfect. Yeah.
Perfect.
Perfect. Further questions? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Colstad.
Thank you.
The public testimony portion of the hearing is now closed. Do commissioners have questions, comments, a motion? Commissioner Birch. I'll start out with a comment. I personally, having reviewed the drawings and the location and everything, would have no problem approving this architectural site application. I, I think that the house is well-designed, fits in well with the landscape. I like the flatter roofs so that it sits low, the profile, and I like the stone. I, I think it will blend in nicely. Now that I understand the variance and how you're actually returning the project to its original grade, I'm, I'm glad of that. That's great. So I personally have no, absolutely no objections to the project at all. Except the light and my, and my occupancy sensor. Commissioner O'Donnell.
I agree with that. We may be ready for a motion. I'm not going to make it, but, because I think somebody else should do that. But I, I agree with what, what you just said. I also, however, agree that it's a little difficult to administer this visibility thing till we get it settled because the comments that I heard are good comments, but we don't have what we can implement and ultimately does have to be adopted or clarified by the town council. So I would like to have a clearer rule. Whether we should have had it done by now or not, I'm not going to comment. I have a lot of confidence in the staff. And I know that they've been busy, so I'm not either defending or attacking. But we don't have it. And now the, perhaps some folks will have something to say to the council, assuming they appeal it. Or, yes, so thank you.
Commissioner Hudes.
Yeah, and I listened carefully to the comments about the visibility, the visibility standards. And I'm very sympathetic to the need to improve the standards for hillside development and concerned about the role of the trees in, in the visibility. But I guess, having maybe missed the details of the recommendation to council, is there, is there anything in that recommendation that would indicate that it would be retroactive to existing properties or projects?
It would not be retroactive.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson.
I just had one question and then I, I'd be glad to make a motion. I'm generally in favor of the project. It's getting late. Oh, my, yeah, my question. The, the view issue. My understanding of if there was the more than 20% exposure, the mitigation for that would be they'd have to reduce the height to 18 feet. Is that correct? It wouldn't be that they couldn't build it.
That's correct.
Okay, that, that was what I wanted to make sure that we were clear on. And Commissioner, or Chair Badami had mentioned that, but I wanted to incorporate. So, so that being the case then, you know, this visibility analysis notwithstanding, I mean, it, which needs to get resolved, I'm comfortable with the proposal as is. So I would like to make a motion that we approve Architecture and Site Application S-16-044, requesting approval to construct a new single-family residence on vacant property, Zone HR-2 1/2, APN 527-09-006. I can make the findings for SEQA that the project is categorically exempt pursuant to the adopted guidelines for the implementation of the SEQA Act. I can make the finding that the property is in, and the applications in compliance with the hillside development standards and guidelines, with the exception of the three-foot fill depth exception, which I can find, make the findings that, that is allowable given the restoration of the hillside. And I can find that the project's in compliance with the hillside specific plan. And I can make the considerations in reviewing of the architecture and site applications and that the, the application would be subject to the conditions in Exhibit 3 with the additional condition that was suggested by Commissioner Birch to have the occupancy sensors for the lights.
So we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second, Commissioner Birch?
I will second that.
All right, any further discussion? Vice Chair Kane.
I'll not be supporting the motion. The architect, when I asked about the turf, the response was something to the effect of you can't have hills if you want children running around, and so we have to flatten them out. And I'm going, wait a minute, that's a hill. Why didn't we, we're building lawns in the hillside using retaining walls. And that's, that's just not what it's about. You know, there's, there's a way of justifying the numbers, and this is a huge house, sustainability, environmental impact, et cetera, et cetera. This comes within two feet of the standard. Is the standard a standard or a target? It just, it gets to me, and I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but it gets to me that we hit those targets and we dig a cellar, we've got a tower. God love them that they can do it, but it's a family room, a living room, a dining room, five bedrooms, five and a half bathrooms, a winery. It's just, to me, it's not a hillside. We have numbers that have been met within two square feet, but yet there's a letter of the law and there's a spirit of the law. I read the vision statement for the hillside guidelines. I do all the time. And I've said this before. I read the forward to the hillside guidelines, and the spirit there is, is not, this project is not compatible with that spirit. We've talked at length this year about look and feel of Los Gatos and how we're sort of, we're, we take an oath to preserve and protect. And if I vote for this, I don't feel like I'm doing that. And I can't stand corrected because I know the numbers are good. I just don't see the spirit of, what is it, 599.999? I don't feel that's right, especially if we're building, building lawns and using retaining walls. I like, the house is fine. I don't like the tower. The house is beautiful. The road improvement is beautiful. I just don't feel like it's in the spirit of the hillsides, and I feel that just had to be said.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will call a question. All in favor? Aye. Passage six to one. Vice Chair Kane opposed. All right, we've come to the election of the chair. I'm sorry, is there appeal rights of the action of the commission on this item, Mr. Paulson?
There are appeal rights. Thank you, Chair Badami. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the planning commission can appeal that decision to the town council. Forms are available in the clerk's office. There is a fee for filing the appeal, and the appeal must be filed within 10 days.
All right, now we've come to the election of the chair and vice chair. Common practice is that the vice chair rotates into the position of chair. So respectfully, I move to nominate Vice Chair Kane as chair. Vice Chair Kane.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. That is an honor, and it's an honor that I would like to defer or delay. My reasons being that my company, now in its 35th year, will be going through an intense period during the next several months. And also, my daughter, who works with me and lives in Santa Cruz, will give birth to my first grandchild in the spring. And that's going to be a little time-consuming. And third, and maybe most importantly, I think I would profit from another year to get the experience as vice chair if in fact I was nominated and if in fact I was elected. To put another year under my belt would just provide for an even better planning commission in the future.
Vice Chair Kane has declined. The motion has essentially failed, so I will make a new nomination. Commissioner O'Donnell is our most experienced commissioner, having served over 12 years. As a proven leader, his wisdom and superb ability to facilitate discussion will serve us well. So I move to nominate Commissioner O'Donnell as chair for 2017. Do I have a second? Commissioner Birch.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor? Aye. Passage unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Now, Chair, would you explain, there's one other procedure now, and that is the naming of the vice chair.
That is correct. And actually, since you are going to be the new chair, it will be up to you to make a motion to nominate a vice chair, as I understand it.
Well, I, I have served with Commissioner Kane not only the last, this last few years, but some years ago, we served four years together. I respect what he's just done because of personal issues. And I would, I feel somewhat almost guilty about that because he should be, under normal circumstances, would be the chair. So that- So that being the case, and also just his value as a commissioner, I would nominate him as the vice chair.
All right, we have a motion to nominate Vice Chair Kane as vice chair Kane. So do I have a second? Commissioner Birch.
I will second again.
All right. Any discussion? Vice Chair Kane.
Yeah, I've watched you for the past year and how much time and effort you put into this, and that's really what I'm saying, is the chair is here, the vice chair is here. I can perform my duties as vice chair. Would love to get elected.
I think you'll be doing just fine under Chair O'Donnell. I will now call the question. All in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously.
May I say something before you adjourn the meeting, at least? I want to say this, I'm sure, without having asked, nevertheless, I'm sure I speak for all of us. You have done just an exceptional job this year. I don't want to say better than one could expect, because that sounds like I didn't expect much, and that's not true. I expected a lot, but you exceeded that, and I'm very impressed. And you've not only done it with intelligence, but you've been very nice while doing it. And that is, believe me, I will tell you, that's something I aspire to. So thank you very much for your, what you've done for us.
Thank you. I have learned so much from all of you, including Commissioner Janoff on the Historic Preservation Committee, and it was an honor and a privilege to serve. So thank you. Thank you all. All right. Mr. Paulson, do you have a report for us this evening?
I do have a few items. Since the commission last met, the council met on December 20th, they considered a couple appeals. One was on High Low Road. They granted that appeal and approved the project with some modifications as direction. So we'll be working forward, or working as we move forward with them resubmitting at staff level. The second appeal was 19 Highland. They denied that appeal, which approved the project, as the planning commission approved it as well. So those were the two actions taken at that meeting. You received two emails later this evening, well, just before this meeting, probably. Some of you may have been in your car and had the pleasure of reading them already. But I will pass out the hard copy of the forms. There is a Planning Commissioner Academy that happens every year, switches back and forth from Northern California and Southern California that the California League of Cities puts on. So we do set aside a limited budget if commissioners are interested. I know some commissioners in the far past had taken advantage of that opportunity, and if you don't have the time or opportunity this year, next year, it will be somewhere up in Northern California, and so that opportunity will be provided again. The second was an invitation from the school board. They will be having an education summit on February 3rd, so they invite planning commissioners to that as well. A couple of other things to note, that on January 26th, we will continue our discussion of the North Forty specific plan amendments, and then we'll see how far we get that evening, and if we come to a conclusion, then that will be forwarded on to planning commission, or to town council, sorry. Otherwise, we'll find another date and continue that discussion until it's completed. And then also, at the end of this month, the council on January 31st will be holding a priority session. So some of the things similar, you know, that are on the list for the priority session that were brought up this evening with the hillside visibility analysis revisions, that's on there. The last action from council was to send that back to the policy committee. We have not gone back there. The council made the determination when it decided to look at revising the specific plan, that they understood that certain things were going to be put on hold until that is completed, and that is one of those items. But the council ultimately sets staff's priorities and work plan, and so we look forward to that conversation, and so we'll see what comes out of that moving forward. So with that, that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. This meeting's adjourned. This meeting's adjourned.